Good morning and welcome to this meeting of the Environmental Scrutiny Committee. I am councillor Adrian Findlay, the chairman of the committee, and sitting to my right is vice-chairman councillor Raymond Whittaker. Before we begin, there is a standard announcement. If we have a fire alarm, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and go straight to the front car park and await further instructions. In addition to welcoming all members of the committee to this meeting, I would also like to welcome Nicole Hilton, Assistant Director for Communities, who will be joining us on teams, councillor Danny Brooks, Executive Councillor for the Environment, and we've received apologies from councillor James Bean, Executive Sport Councillor for the Environment. We also have in the chamber some representatives from the district councils who have been invited to attend for item six on the Fens 2100 strategy. These and other participants will be introduced when we reach their item or when they first speak. This meeting is being recorded and will be loaded onto the website in full later today. All your comments will remain accessible online after the meeting. Just a couple of housekeeping announcements before we begin. Going to remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent, please. Thank you. Item one, apologies for absence and replacement members. Jess, please.
Thank you, Chairman. We have councillor Beecham replacing councillor Sneath and councillor Corey replacing councillor Carrington, and as you've noted, we've also received apologies from councillor Bean. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Declarations of members' interests. Do any members wish to declare any interests? Thank you. Item three, minutes of the last meeting on the 1st of August 2025. To confirm as a correct record, the minutes of the last meeting of this committee on the 1st of August 2025, the minutes are found on pages five to 14 of the agenda pack. Can I ask for a proposer? Second, thank you. All those in favour? Any against? Abstentions? Thank you. I can confirm that those minutes have been approved. Item four, announcements and updates. This is a standard item on the scrutiny committee agenda, enabling announcements to be made. As chair, I have no announcements. Can I ask the executive councillor, councillor Danny Brooks, if he has any announcements?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I've got a small announcement. I don't want to take up too much time because I know we've got a packed agenda. So basically, the community repaint scheme is now fully operational at all our household waste recycling centres across Lincolnshire. So that's diverting thousands of litres of paint from incineration, making this resource available free of charge to residents, charities and community groups. We've got a few comprehensive reports coming up by the officers, so I won't go into any of those because obviously they're better at that job than I am. We have nine section 19s ongoing now and they should all be complete within the next six months. So other than that, everything is as it is in the report. Thank you.
Lovely. Thank you very much. Just as a comment, fantastic news about the recycling paint that's been successful. Thank you councillor Brooks. Can I ask if any lead officers, if they have any announcements, please? No, thank you. We do have a comprehensive agenda today, so we'll keep to one or two questions at a time per member, allowing the officers a fair opportunity to answer. Item five, update from risk management authorities. I would like to welcome our flood risk partner guests, Morgan Ray, area flood risk manager for Lincolnshire and Northamptonshire area of the environmental agency, Daniel Wivnall, chief executive of the Black Slough Internal Drainage Board. We have received Matt Moore from the Strategic Partnership Manager for Angling Water. Unfortunately, we've received an apology with no replacement. We also have the county council's own flood and water team representatives, Chris Miller, head of environment, and Matt Harrison, flood and water manager. We will take each presentation in turn, beginning with the environment agency. I urge that questions are strategic and focused on overall delivery. If you have any questions of highly localised nature, for example, on a particular village, street or location, please email Chris Miller directly so he can pass them on to the relevant agency and deal with appropriately. Thank you. Firstly, we have a presentation from Morgan Ray on behalf of the environmental agency, whose report is set out on pages 17 to 27. Morgan, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you for the invite to this committee. I do have a PowerPoint, so we'll just get that up on the screen. So if you want to press the slideshow. Yep, good. So yeah, just a very brief update, just to highlight a few points from the paper that's gone out. So it's more of a strategic update, just looking at the overall position of our investment programme. So this is our capital works, which covers both ourselves and other risk management authorities such as internal drainage boards. A quick overview of our maintenance position and the sorts of maintenance that we carry out on a yearly basis. Important part of what we do is around incident management and resilience, so just a quick overview on that. And one of us, you've had a previous visitor from Deb Campbell, who's talked about the coastal strategy, Lincolnshire Coast 2100. Amy's here today, Amy Shaw's here today to talk about the Fens 2100, but we've also got another strategic project, the Humber 2100, so I've got a brief overview of that. So we'll go on to the next one, please, Jess. So our investment programme helps to contribute a lot of outcomes that the government requires of us to deliver, both ourselves and other risk management authorities. It's part of a two-year programme from the current government, 2.65 billion over the two years up to March 2026. Following that, a new programme will commence, which we're just waiting for the details of. But over this year, across our accounting area, we've got 14 different areas throughout the country, but our accounting area for this area is our Lincolnshire and Northamptonshire area, and that largely covers the Anglian northern RFCC boundary. Across that, for all risk management authorities, the investment over the current year is around about 88 million pounds. Over this year, we're forecasting to protect or reduce the risk of flooding to around about 5,800 properties within this area as a result of this, what we call flood defence granting aid investment. So this is, as I said, this is investment both from ourselves, other risk management authorities, and it helps to deliver the government's target of 52,000 homes and non-residential properties such as shops, businesses and public buildings and critical infrastructure over this investment period. If we want to go on to the next one. So this is just an overview of our maintenance activities. So this is our frequent maintenance, so this is what we might do on a yearly basis. I've given you other examples within the paper of our intermittent maintenance programme, which is sort of cyclical, it might be done every few years, but this, for the sake of the presentation, just gives a rundown of the sort of maintenance that we carry out as the environment agency throughout that area over the year. And this is the year up to the start of September, so you can see a right round on the outside of the circle there, that's how much we've completed of that particular task this year, and the proportions by which we do those different activities. And that's laid out in more detail in the paper, and you can see the types of activities that we've got there. It's important to note that we, for example, for that sort of maintenance bracket, receive around about 11.3 million pounds across the Lincolnshire and Northamptonshire area. We do put in a much larger sort of needs-based bid, which is an internal bid, so the environment agency's charged with spending the money that it receives in the most effective way. Nationally, that's proportioned largely to do with, you know, protecting the most homes and businesses from that money. So we have to then proportion that out in the most effective way locally. We'll go on to the next one. So another important aspect, and I wanted to come here today just to give you a broad overview of the types of activities that we get involved with. So incident management and resilience is an important part and an increasing in the important part of our role. So I'll make no apologies for just shamelessly plugging our flood warning service here, and it's a reminder of what the different sort of flood warning alerts mean. So we have the first sort of level of alert, if you like, is the flood alert, and that's around being prepared. And that is, so these cover a much wider area, and it indicates that there is the possibility of flooding in that area, and you should start to pay more attention to things like the weather forecasts and look out for flood warnings that may or may not come through. So the flood warning, when we issue flood warnings, and we have people monitoring this 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, the flood warning is, you know, we think flooding's going to happen, so this is around, you should act. The severe flood warning, we've put on here, survive, you know, this is where we think flooding of a serious nature's going to happen. We normally issue these in conjunction with the emergency services, so at this stage we're probably seeing a multi-agency response, don't necessarily have to, but we normally see that sort of multi-agency response with our local resilience forum partners, and we would agree that a severe flood warning is needed. These are quite rare, we've not issued one in Lincolnshire for a time, we've issued them in Northamptonshire over the last year, I don't know if you remember, the Billing Aquadrome caravan site where we've issued severe warnings. A new tool in our armour at the moment is the emergency alert, so a few weeks ago, you were probably disturbed on a Sunday afternoon at three o'clock when all your phones buzzed, so that's another sort of tool in our armour, and we can discuss sending those with the cabinet office and follow that process through if we feel that's necessary. But the paper sort of refers to a number of engagement activities which we run in different communities to promote our flood warning service, and, you know, I'd really encourage you to encourage your constituents, if they've not done so already, to, you know, look at the dot gov website, see if they're at risk of flooding, and then sign up to the appropriate flood warnings, which is all available on there. Lastly, Jess, we'll go on to the Humber 2100. So as I said, so you've had previous presentations from Deb Hickton about the coastal work and that important strategy. Amy's going to talk about the Fens 2100 work here today, but another important strategy that impacts on Lincolnshire, mostly our North Lincolnshire colleagues, but also there are impacts in West Lindsay and East Lindsay, and they're very much partners within this. You can see all the different partners that are involved within the Humber 2100, and maybe it's perhaps a subject of a future, more in-depth presentation. But the Humber 2100, again, is looking at the future flood risk around the Humber estuary. And because, you know, what you do in one place could impact on another, it's very much important that we do look at this in a strategic way. So we've, basically, we've looked at the first stage, so we now sort of have a good understanding of the risks of now and into the future. So the next stage is sort of looking at and agreeing different approaches to managing that risk going forward. So there's a lot of work going on around that subject at the moment, and very much important that we maintain a sort of strong partnership to be able to complete that work going forward. So I'll leave it there, I'm sure there's lots of questions, so happy to take it.
Thank you for the presentation, Morgan. It's, like I say, it's very detailed and a lot of valuable information in there, especially for people liking higher-risk areas. I mean, one thing I did pick up on with it, which is something a lot of people don't think about, is turning off gas, water and electric. When you look at the implications of that, it can be quite effective, so. Right, so we can now move to questions from members on the committee of the environmental Please indicate to me or the vice-chair if you wish to speak. Thank you. Councillor Wilmurst.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Morgan, for a great presentation there. I think part of my question has actually been answered, which was basically, would we be able to use the government's new text message alert system to warn people of any sort of localised flooding in their areas and things like that? But do we have a timeline for that, or, you know, any sort of technicals behind that that we could have a look at, please?
Yeah, but that's available to us to use now. So that would be, you know, we'd be looking at using that in conjunction with the severe flood warning. So the sorts of events that, in this area, that might give rise to that are potential sort of east coast flooding. So we know we've got, you know, several thousand homes, 40,000 caravans on the coast, so, you know, really severe risk to life. So we would certainly be looking at, you know, working with our colleagues in the local resilience forum and going through the relevant processes to issue, you know, that alert if it was needed. But again, I mean, we have seen examples of it being used around the country for severe weather, and I believe it has been used for flooding as well. So yeah, it's a tool in our armour, like we say.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. I noticed on the pie chart of your maintenance expenditure, spending roughly three and a half million per year on grass cutting. Can you just explain why it's so essential that we spend that amount of money on grass cutting? Because on the face of it, it doesn't seem that obvious that it's particularly relevant, particularly at that sort of expense.
No, no, that's a really good point, and, you know, happy to be able to answer that. So in Lincolnshire, we have around about 2,200 kilometres of raised embankments, so you'll see these down the River Wutham and other watercourses. Some of those are, you know, two or three metres high, if not more, they also cover quite a wide footprint, so that's quite a lot of land, if you like, that that sort of grassed area covers. The reason why it's important that we maintain those, that grass sward, if you like, is that the more you cut the grass, the stronger that grass sward gets, and then it becomes more resistant to things like burrowing animals, and if the river did overtop it, and the river exceeded the capacity of the channel, there's less chance of that embankment then sort of degrading and collapsing during that sort of flood event. We've seen over the last year, we've got pictures of water exceeding the capacity of the channel at places like Wayne Fleet, where we've had really good sort of that maintenance, the bank sort of held up there. So it's a really important part of what we do, and we make no apologies for, you know, investing time and effort and, you know, good equipment to maintain that sort of asset base of embankments, because in Lincolnshire and these lowland areas in particular, they're really important to continued function of the areas at risk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Chair. I've seen in various section 19 reports references to the installation of additional gauge stations, obviously to increase monitoring and the emergency alerts to residents. Is this something that you've actually actively done, you've implemented these, or are they in the pipeline? I'm just wondering what the timeline would be on that, because obviously we're entering autumn, winter, and especially in Grantham, we only have one station to the south of the town. The flooding that happened, I believe it would have been beneficial to have an extra station or two somewhere in there. So is that something that could be actively done quickly for the benefit of a resident? And also, just a quick question on dredging. Whenever we get heading up with flooding, residents will jump up and down saying dredging is the answer to everything, it's not been done. We had the MP of Boston going on about protecting badgers or something, or water voles in aid of, is there a reason you can't do dredging? Could you just give us a few comments on dredging, what you're doing with it and what its actual impact is, please? Thank you.
So first of all, the question about gauging stations, yeah, and we do have a network of gauging stations throughout Lincolnshire and throughout the country. In fact, while I'm here, it's probably worth plugging our river level sort of online site where people can go on and look at those river levels. And there's also links to flood warning areas and things like that on there, so it's worth people having a look at that. But there is a network of gauging stations and the data is sort of open data. It is, they are complex to put in and maintain and run, so they do come, they are quite an investment to put them in. So we feel that we've got a good network of gauging stations. We do look to opportunities where we can to work in partnership with others to see if we can get, you know, increase that data. In fact, as part of other initiatives, we're working with others in other parts of the county to, you know, to put in some sort of data loggers and things like that. But as far as the actual sort of official sort of network is concerned, I don't see a large rapid expansion of that network, because, like I say, it is quite an investment to, you know, sort of build them, maintain them and keep them going. So we do, obviously, place a lot of importance of making sure that those gauging stations, both for high and low flows, are maintainable and are well-run, because we want good, accurate data from them, which is the most important thing. So your next point, I think, was around dredging. So yeah, as you can see from the pie charts are given there, dredging is, again, is a tool in our armoury. We do get asked a lot about dredging, and in certain locations, yeah, it is an appropriate method that we use to reduce flood risk. We do have to, as you can see, you know, we've got lots of activities we need to undertake on a yearly basis, and we have to look at what's the most effective activity for that location. So where we've got, for example, lots of raised embankments, we, as I said, we make no apologies to concentrating on those embankments, to make sure that there is, road busters can be with the grass maintenance. Dredging, like I say, is a good tool, particularly in some of the lowland areas such as our IDB colleagues maintain, where it enables good land drainage. But in terms of wider flood risk management benefit, it's often sort of limited to what can be achieved. We do do dredging, we worked in partnership with Lindsay Marsh Drainage Board to do a significant amount of dredging at Wayne Fleet three or four years ago. So it is something that we do do, but not widely.
Matt, is this a follow-up on Morgan, what you were about? I didn't want to jump the queue on the names I've got down here, but this is a follow-up with what Morgan's just explained.
Yeah, sorry, thank you, Chair. It was just a follow-up on that particular point, actually, and to expand for councillor Martin, that through the project groundwater that's been led through the floods of water team here at Lincolnshire County Council, there is some work around telemetry and increasing telemetry on watercourses in the county, which will then help with that informing and evidence base for monitoring, and there's part of a monitoring network that's being looked at. So happy to give you some detail around that offline, but also happy to bring that in more detail to a future committee meeting if that would be helpful, so we can expand on what we're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. Obviously, the more information we've got, the less questions it's to answer, so thank you for that. Councillor Beecham.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr Ray, for your report. It's very interesting. This is a case of forgive my ignorance, but for those of us new to flood risk budgets, you go through the maintenance budget in section 2.1. Can you explain the terms of, or the difference between internal drainage board preset, general drainage charge and local levy?
Yes, certainly. So IDB preset is a charge we levy to our IDB colleagues, so that is for, in principle, for management of water that comes out of the IDB district, that then goes into the main river system. So there's a charge we agree every year as part of the flood and coastal defence committee, which is levied every year on IDBs, and IDBs pay a different amount according to the size of their district, correctly formal, Daniel, but I think that's more or less the process there. The general drainage charge is particular to more the Anglian region, so this is a charge on ratepayers throughout the area, and that's, again, to manage sort of water that, you know, flows into the lowland watercourses. Local levy is, this is a national, it's raised by each coastal river, flood and coastal committee, RFCC, and this is a levy on the upper tier authorities, so the likes of Lincolnshire County Council, North Lincolnshire Council, North East Lincolnshire Council, you know, those sort of upper tier authorities, based on the flood risk within those areas. And that goes towards, again, it's a levy that comes into the environment agency, and then the committee can choose to support different elements of work. So for example, there might be local initiatives, so I believe Matthew supported, was it sort of Long Bennington Surface Water Scheme two or three years ago, so things like that, so it can support other risk management authorities in their work. It can top up the investment programme, so if there's a scheme that perhaps needs a little bit more funding to help, you know, get that one over the line, it can top that up. And it could be put towards maintenance activities as well. So it's up to the discretion of the RFCC to decide in principle how it would like to see those funds distributed.
Thank you. Can I just remind everybody about your microphones, please, because I did notice, Morgan, I have watched previous recordings, and if you've phased it away from the mic, it struggles to pick you up on the recording, but thank you. Councillor Corey.
Thank you, Chairman. I've made hasty notes, but I've just tried to read them and I can't, so forgive me. Morgan, thank you for your answer to my colleague's question on dredging and the need to decide when and where to dredge. It's not the cure-all that people think it is, and it's not about necessarily, you know, deciding not to dredge, it's not about the protection of voles, as some people argue. Sometimes the best thing to do is not to speed up the flow of water, but to slow it down. Can you tell us when and why you make those judgements?
Yeah, it's a really good point. So yes, slower flow is, like I say, another kind of tool in our armoury, and it's something which probably over the coming years will become a greater, more emphasis on. So this is around using things like natural flood risk management. So for example, in the Wayne Fleet catchment, in the River Steeping catchment, we've had, again, projects funded by local again, projects funded by local levy, actually, working with landowners to put in measures that actually will slow the flow, to prevent water from coming off sort of the wolds and the farmland there into the Steeping River. Like I say, it's a tool, it won't completely solve the issue, but it will certainly contribute towards, you know, reducing some of the peak flows. So certainly upstream of communities, it's a really good sort of, it's a really good tool, as I said, and something, as I say, that, you know, in the recent consultation for the government's sort of funding, which will start next year, it suggested that perhaps this will be, you know, considered more and more. In terms of, you know, further downstream, throughout some of the towns and cities, you know, such as Lincoln, it's important to make sure, you know, we've got a good flow of water, so we will carry out maintenance in those sort of areas. But again, like I say, it depends on the location, the funding available, and the impact, the best impact that we can have for that funding. So it's very much a sort of case-by-case basis.
Sorry, Chairman, can I just have a supplementary on that, please? You mentioned upstream and downstream, so that very often, where the symptoms are presented is not where the problem started. So how effective are the partnership arrangements in going to the place where actually the problem started, and persuading people to invest their money in stopping the problem there before it actually creates severe flooding somewhere else? Are those mechanisms in place? Are they effective? Is the funding there? Is the political will there? Thank you.
So we have what we call permissive powers to carry out works on main river. So main river, strangely, are what's defined on the National Main River Map, and it's normally some of the larger watercourses in the area. Although I do know main rivers you can step over, and non-main rivers you'd need a rowing boat to get across. But by and large, it's the larger rivers and watercourses in the area. So our powers only relate to those watercourses. So we are limited to what we can do upstream of those areas. We don't have any sort of powers to do work outside of those boundaries. Having said that, we are a statutory consultancy in the planning process, so on significant developments, we will have, we will provide comments on those sort of larger planning applications, and to the local planning authority, who will then make decisions based on those and other comments from other statutory consultees.
Thank you. Councillor Wood.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. Given what I do on a daily basis, I come across a lot of people in chalets, caravans, sati caravans, lodges, and all those types of buildings. It occurred to me the other day, because we have a lot of people, you know, up the coast, and Skegness and Chapel St Leonard's, how are they, how are those people and those buildings being factored into flood risk assessments and emergency planning?
So, yeah, a great question, and it is a particular risk to the lowland areas. Not in this area, but over the last winter, we did see, I think it was up to 1,500 caravans at the Billing Aquadrome site in Northampton evacuated, and they were out of their homes for some time. So in the planning process, we have contributed to previous sort of planning, you know, developments or proposals for caravans, and we're very much, you know, and, you know, we support that, you know, that there's seasonal occupancy to a lot of these locations, so certainly on the coast, I think a lot of the planning applications, you know, require the sites to be, you know, to be vacated in the most, if you like, stormy part of the winter months. So that sort of goes into the process. Having said that, we do exercise with our local resilience forum partners the risk, you know, of the coastal flooding, and certainly, you know, the numbers of caravans and mobile homes of that order do come into a lot of that planning. So within the last, I think, two or three years, we've held a major exercise looking at, you know, coastal inundation flooding. And we do update our plans regularly, and have a lot of internal training around, you know, managing flood risk on the coast, and making sure that our staff are, you know, able to issue relevant flood warnings in a timely way.
Sorry, can I just come back on that, Chair? When you say about the, obviously, that you've got planning for seasonal occasions, does the planning take into account that there's been a massive increase of people almost living in these types of, you know, parks and buildings nearly all year round?
Apart from commenting on new applications, that's where we come in, and also planning for, you know, emergency response. So we work with our, like I said, our local resilience forum partners to be able to do that. So we have, we can give comments, we can describe the flood risk, but it's for the local planning authority to decide, you know, how they want to, you know, issue those plans or not.
Thank you. Councillor Wimhurst.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Morgan. And I apologise if this has already been touched upon, but I was just wondering whether you're aware of any plans for the government to review the funding mechanism for the drainage boards, which would include for the levies passed to the district councils?
Amy just looked at me, I don't know if you've got a, would you want to answer that, Amy?
Hi there. Yes, I believe there is some work going on at the moment to look at the IDB funding mechanism. I'm now looking at Daniel.
I attended Westminster as part of the special interest group only a few weeks ago. The history of it is the councils collect the drainage rates on our behalf. This is all around poll tax time, so I wasn't about, but that's what I'm told. That was then put into the income of the council, goes off to central government, and then 100% of it used to come back via the grant. That percentage that comes back from that grant now has been diminishing over the years, to the extent that councils that have IDBs within their areas, excuse me, are unfairly disadvantaged, because they're having to pay the special levy to the drainage boards, and they're not being recompensed. So that affects the other services that the councils are able to offer. So that special interest group is looking for a different, fairer way to fund that special levy to drainage boards, and seems to be getting a lot of traction. This is the second reception we've had in Westminster, and the IDBs are generally supportive of that.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. A quick question, are caravans mainly becoming prioritised in east coast areas? And my area is Mabelthorpe, and it's seen becoming, having more caravans and houses in that area. Are they being prioritised because they're less likely to be impacted by flooding? Or is it because they cause less environmental damage or pressure to the area? And if that is the case, should we be encouraging housing to be built further inland, rather than the, on the coast? Thank you.
So, there's a couple of points there. So in terms of, in terms of emergency planning, yeah, we look at all receptors, if you like, of potential flood wars. So obviously, caravans come into that, communities and other receptors. So we will look at the risk across the board and make sure we've got the right plans in place. It is probably just worth pointing out, there's an interesting discussion about caravans and mobile homes. We do get money for our investment programme. The current investment programme is based, like I say, largely on properties. We're not able to include sort of those, like, temporary accommodation caravans within that calculation, for the most part. There are some exceptions where we can, but for the most part, we won't be able to include those, like, 30,000 or 40,000 caravans within our calculations, which go in towards that, for our business cases, for flood defences, in effect. So we're a little bit limited in that respect going forward. With regards to moving caravans, that's not something which we can sort of demand as the Environment Agency. We can give evidence and advice. But, you know, going forward, you know, we do need to look closely at the coast, and I think that's partly, we've got another agenda writing coming up, looking at that further, so for, you know, potential investment to look at the future of the land use on the coast.
Any more questions? Well, thank you very much, Morgan. Right. Did you want to come back in, Morgan?
Yeah, there was a question I realised I didn't answer, and that was about badgers and voles.
Oh, right.
From the councillor over there. And, yeah, I mean, I don't mind answering that. We have to follow the Countryside and Wildlife Act with our work, and we can't ask our staff not to, to break the law effectively, as other organisations here, you know, the IDB and others have to follow that. So where we do have badgers or other sort of burrowing animals in our embankments, that's a position we don't like, so we will work, you know, to try and remove those. So we are licensed by Natural England to, you know, to put in the appropriate exclusion measures. It's not a quick process, but it's something that we will try and do, you know, as we go through. Again, with water voles, protected species, it's against the law to damage their habitat. So we will, where we can, try and mitigate that as much as possible. So we, where, you know, people and properties are the most important thing to us, and that's what we will concentrate on, but we must do that within the law.
Thank you very much. Councillor Ewson.
First of all, Chair, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak, because you did say at the beginning of the meeting on item number six, but it's useful information here. And the question I'll ask Morgan, thanks very much for his report, is on item 1.1 on page 17. You state that you're currently forecasting 5,800 properties in the region will have a reduced risk of flooding, which is good news. But the information I'd like, and I know under the county column divisions, I'm particularly interested in the information relating to the Bootham Division and Park Ward Division, and possibly, where councillor Murray's sitting in front, the Carlow Division, which are the inner-city wards in Lincoln, and they did suffer some level of flooding. So it'd be interesting if you could give the information. I don't want the full list of these properties, 5,800, but specifically for those areas of Lincoln, to see if they are part of these 5,800 properties that's going to get reduced risk of flooding, and see if it actually works. Because if those same properties do suffer flooding, then it proves to me that the works that are taking place are not the type of works that's going ahead to reduce that risk of flooding. So is it possible to have that information in one place, where all councillors, or all areas of the county, I presume, could take it down to their level to see these properties that are supposed to be now, moving forward, getting a reduced risk of flooding? If that information is possible, please. Thanks very much. Thanks once again, Chair.
No problem.
No, no, it's a good point. So that 5,800 properties are properties that, where, we said, there's around about 87 million pounds investment over the coming year. Some of that investment will be ongoing, so some of that investment will be schemes which are occurring over multiple years, so those schemes won't be finished over the next year. What that 5,800 refers to are schemes that will be finished over the coming year, and that's what the, what that investment will contribute towards. So, and also, it refers to our capital investment programme. So we will be carrying out other activities in the locations you mentioned, such as our routine maintenance and our more cyclical maintenance, which does help to reduce the risk of flooding to those properties. But this refers to the, that part of the report refers to the more like the one-off capital investments that we make to particular assets or locations. But I'm happy to provide a list of those capital schemes and what they're contributing. But I think probably some of the areas that you referred to probably benefited from quite a large capital investment over the last sort of five years. So we have worked quite extensively throughout Lincoln, over the past five years, spending several million pounds of capital investment to update the flood defences, sluice gates, and the flood storage areas upstream of Lincoln that helped to keep the water back.
Thank you for that, Morgan. Yeah, any additional information you can offer us, then, yeah, I'm sure Chris will be happy to accept it and distribute it accordingly. Thank you. Are we all done with questions? Thank you. Right, we can now move to our next presenter, Daniel Whibnall, who is representing on behalf of the Internal Drainage Boards of Lincolnshire.
Good morning, Daniel. Thank you. Good morning. I've pulled a presentation together firstly, looking at what an IDB is. I'm pretty sure you all have a reasonable idea, but just a few slides to look at IDBs, how they impact on Lincolnshire, and then going forward. And then I've probably broken the chairman's rule, and I've looked at some specific examples, but as examples of a wider issues. And I, unapologetically, have recycled some slides from last week. I've only seen one councillor that was at the NK meeting, so I think I'll be okay, and we'll go from there. So what is an internal drainage board? There's 112 internal drainage boards across the country, establishing low-lying areas within the country, and our functions are all set out within the Land Drainage Acts 1991. We've got a general duty, as Morgan touched on before, a permissive powers, to look after the drainage and supervise drainage within the board's area. On the chart there, you can see a large concentration of IDBs around Lincolnshire and around the Wash. And if we move on to the next slide, this map shows where the 14 IDBs within Lincolnshire feature. Some are wholly within Lincolnshire, and some, such as the Trent IDB, which until I put this slide together, I didn't realise was in Lincolnshire, just a sliver or so as they go through. The IDBs, when the Flood and Water Management Acts 2010 came into existence, we dealt with something called Total Environment, and that's two days, that's been mentioned on the trot, Matthew, so I hope you're feeling okay. And the county council became the lead local flood authority. And as part of that, we worked in partnership, and if we go on to the next map, we agreed with Lincolnshire County Council that we would take on the consenting role, so some of that supervision of the drainage, on behalf of Lincolnshire County Council as the lead local flood authority. And also, on a request basis, we deal with some of the enforcement matters that come to us as the specialist drainage elements, so we deal with that as well. On the next slide, there's some of the idea of what IDBs do. The 22,000 kilometres mentioned in what we maintain, that is the 112 IDBs within the country. I'm not sure the total in Lincolnshire. I can tell you that it's 500 miles within the Black Sluice area. That's where my specialist knowledge and detail can come from, if required. That's where my specialist knowledge and detail can come from if required. So we control water levels, again, pumping stations, five hundred in the country, there's thirty-four just within the Black Sluice IDB area. They're all electric and there are sixty-three pumps and we'll come back to electric a little bit more later on. We are supported by the Land Drainage Act I've already mentioned and section twenty-three of the Land Drainage Act allows IDBs to create bylaws to make sure that drainage systems work and then reduce flood risk and environmental damage. Now, that is all we can do. We can do drainage, we can work to reduce flood risk and we can do the environmental side of things. We're not water level managers. So there's elements at the moment where we're looking at reservoirs and things where there may be more involvement. We've just had a very, a very dry summer, so there was options there where we might want to hold up water. But strictly speaking, as regulations as they are, that isn't possible, although we are lobbying to have that revisited as we go forward to make it work better within the whole system, rather than us indiscriminately getting the water and throwing it out to sea. Improve, build new infrastructure to make our systems work better and then the environmental and the conservation elements before. I did say I'd bring some specific examples and electricity on the next slide. These are both from the North Cussteven District Council that I used last week and this just gives some indication of the challenges we started to experience in around twenty-two, twenty-three to coincide with the Ukraine war. Not just the price of electricity to buy it, but the biggest problem at the moment is the standing charges. And if you look at the two top sections of there, Witham and Humber is made up of four IDBs within Lincolnshire and we're going from fifty-three thousand pound in twenty-twenty to two hundred and fifty-six thousand in twenty-twenty-four. That's before we turn a pump on. So that is all this summer, those pumps have been sat there doing very little, if anything, but we've still had to pay quarter of a million pound a year just for those pumps to sit there. And that's because when we do turn our pumps on, we need a lot of power all at the same time to get those pumps going. So Ofgem were looking to do a review on something called peaky users, which we fall into that category, because it was seen that we were unfairly disadvantaged by the reviewing standing charges. Unfortunately, that review is going to advise to the Ofgem committee that nothing further should be done and it should stay as it is because that's a fair distribution of the cost. So we're still on with that and still lobbying to try and make a difference with that. But as of yesterday, my confidence that we may come to a solution with that is diminishing. Following the storm Babette and storm Henk winter before last and the other events that happened over that very wet six months, IDBs were very fortunate to be able to access some DEFRA funding, more from the agricultural part of DEFRA rather than the water part of DEFRA, to the sum of seventy-five thousand pounds. And that was focused on three elements, the first being recovery and pumping stations that were out of action, breaches and drains slips, all that sort of thing being repaired. The second tranche was about increasing the resilience of our assets, so raising electrical panels, putting in different motors in and that sort of thing. And then we had an extra section that came in at the end, which was to recognise innovation and that's when the sum went from the seventy-five million to the ninety-one million in April twenty-twenty-five. So we are working hard and have been now, it seems, for two years nearly, to get back to the position we were in before storm Babette and also to try and drive things forward so when the next storm Babette comes, we're in a better position to actually handle that situation. The difficulty with that is the original funding had to be spent by March twenty-twenty-five. That was then extended to March twenty-twenty-six, but there is currently a hard deadline of March twenty-twenty-six, when all these projects have to be completed or that money will disappear. So that's what we're working on at the moment to try and make sure that we can deliver on that. And then the two examples at the bottom, the Witham and Humber Boards, twenty-two schemes and eleven ongoing, total of seventeen point four million. And then the Black Sluice, eight schemes, eight ongoing, five point two million. So of that ninety-one million, those two organisations have taken quite a big chunk and that's because that's the areas of Lincolnshire that was most affected and within the country. So Lincolnshire's done very well out of that fund. So the next slide is a specific example. I apologise for the chair and I'm sure he'll shut me off if it comes down to it. But the reason I include this, and I just want to say before we start this, this isn't directed at the local officers of the Environment Agency. We work very closely with the Environment Agency as partners in many different aspects. It's directed at the Environment Agency as a large central government body and also at the Treasury rules and how the Treasury rules force the hand of the local officers. So the cliff beck on this map, you can't see it very clearly, but I think we'll just about make it out. The cliff beck is the red squiggly line that comes from the north-west and down to the south-east. And the cliff beck hasn't attracted any funding for the last two years to do any maintenance whatsoever. This is because the mechanical engineering has taken priority nationally for the Environment Agency and that funding just isn't available. The difficulty that we have at Black Sluice IDB is that in the top left-hand corner, those blue drains are draining the south of Sleaford and a brand-new development called Handley Chase, which is going to have fifteen hundred homes on it. So if we go on to the next slide, we can see the cliff beck in all of its glory. And if you didn't know you were looking at drains, you may be wondering why we're looking at a picture of a lot of bushes and such like. So all the water from the south of Sleaford's going into our drainage network and then we discharge it into the cliff beck and it's going to navigate down those watercourses. Now, this particular drain hasn't been maintained this year and wasn't maintained last year. So that's only two years' worth of growth generally that is in there. Across Lincolnshire, Witham and Humber Boards and the Witham Forth Boards have agreed for one year, they are going to undertake that maintenance. For the Witham and Humber Boards, that's a cost to their boards that would normally be paid by the Environment Agency of a hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds. And then there's another area around Digby that contractors normally do to a value of forty thousand pounds. And the Witham and Humber Boards feel it's imperative that they do that to maintain the flow, but they can only do that on a one-year basis because they don't have the funding to take them on on a long-term basis. So that's something that I've been asked to raise as a concern. Just on the cliff beck, if we were to try and get the cliff beck into a state where we could maintain it in the same way we would maintain our own drainboards, we'd estimate upfront, we'd need about five hundred and seventy-seven thousand pounds on the next slide to actually get it into that state and then be able to maintain it reliably going forward as an IDB drain. And that's something we're in discussions with the Environment Agency over because at the end of the day, we need to know where we're going to put our water. Been talking with the local PSO officers and we have been discussing storage reservoirs and slowing the flow and all those sort of things. My board's very concerned that if we were to clear the cliff beck and it goes to the junction of the next Environment Agency River, actually by doing that, are we increasing the risk to Helpringham and then further downstream as it makes its way to the south forty foot? So concerns from that point of view. The next one is an example from Witham Forth. Witham Forth Hobhole Pumping Station requires replacement. That's being worked up now and they're hoping that it will progress going forwards. That drains most of the Witham Forth area, so it's a very important asset to them. Estimating the replacement cost for that is going to be in the region of ninety to a hundred million pounds and that's been funded mostly, if not entirely, through flood defence grant and aid through the Environment Agency and DEFRA. And then just on my final slide, although there's quite a lot of subjects on it, I'll work through quickly. The PSCA works for the Environment Agency is the cliff beck stuff that we've just talked about and that wider issue. EA maintains a main river. Morgan's already spoken on that, so I'll not go any further on that sort of thing. Support during and after flooding events. IDBs are not able to access the Bellwind Scheme. So when something happens within the county and the Bellwind Scheme is activated by council, we can put our costs to that council and we can claim costs along with them. What we can't do is if the council doesn't reach their thresholds, we then don't have any access to the Bellwind Scheme at all. So from that aspect, we need to look at how we can do that going forward. I think the IDB recovery from the ninety-one million pounds I spoke about earlier was their way of doing that, but that's not guaranteed to be there for future events. The special levy and funding of the special interest group, I think I've covered that, so I'll not take that any further. Highland water contributions, this is a particular concern for the Witham and Humber Boards, where a considerable amount of their budget comes from Highland water contributions paid from the Environment Agency. We had some issues last year where there wasn't enough funding to cover those Highland water contributions, so there was some concerns then. And we believe there's a review of the Highland water charges going through now. But in the end, the RFCC supported the EA and ourselves and they filled the gap between the Highland water charges. So that meant that the Witham and Humber Boards were able to proceed from that point of view. Electricity standing charges I've already covered. And then going forward, the government, local government reorganisation, the special levy element we've talked about through the special interest group. But board membership is a concern from the point of view of if we have large organisations with fewer councillors, where will the members come from for the boards? Because at the moment, they come from the district and the local councillors. And I think that's the prime concern as we go forward, that is there going to be enough councillors to actually sit on our boards? Next item, oh, the next three items are all Black Sluice related, Fens twenty-one hundred plus. I think as a prelude to what Amy's going to talk about, going forward, we are going to have to do something different to protect the fens, to keep the fens. If we don't do something different and we end up going down the do-nothing option, I fear that we'll be surrendering the south of Lincolnshire. That's how drastic it is and that's how the recent studies are coming up. If we don't look at how we're going to do something different or central government don't look at how we're going to do something different, we are surrendering. Lincolnshire Reservoir, that's in the Black Sluice area or within the Black Sluice area is probably more accurate because it's actually a little hole in the middle, but it's going to impact the Black Sluice Drainage Board. We think now only from emergency discharge point of view, because we think the water's going to get to the reservoir by a pipe, well, that then won't impact on the Black Sluice Drainage Board. Our concern is the emergency discharge because if they need to empty the reservoir, it's going to have to go out through the south forty-foot drain. And as we'll discuss in a moment, the south forty-foot drain is an EA watercourse, but it's got no capacity and we know it's got no capacity as experienced in January twenty-twenty-five. I'm sure the argument will be it's a one-in-a-million chance that they'll need to empty the reservoir at the same time as a fluvial event, at the same time as some spring tides. But January twenty-twenty-five, we had the spring tides and we had the fluvial event at the same time. Emptying the reservoir, I would suggest, will come following a period of heavy rain. So I don't think it's one-in-a-million chance that all those three will coincide. So we are pushing that very much with the Anglin water. I was only talking to Morgan about it last week and expressing our concerns. And then the final item on here, I'm sure you'll cover later on, the Boston flooding. That's from the south forty-foot drain, so that's the connection. It is an EA watercourse, however, most of the Black Sluice pumping stations and watercourses discharge into the south forty-foot drain. There's concerns over how that water is evacuated. There's concerns for the thirty-six homes that are flooded. The report that the local office has done, it's very comprehensive and has been very useful, certainly given us something to be able to reassure people with. And they've done work on the flood walls and the seams of the flood walls to try and reduce some of the seepage and that sort of thing. So that's all good work. I know they have more plans in the future, but ultimately, we're talking about twenty-two centimetres. The water was twenty-two centimetres above the flood wall. So if tomorrow we're in, or three days' time, we're in exactly the same situation, the water's exactly the same level, twenty-two centimetres above that flood wall, we'll be in exactly the same situation with thirty-six homes flooded and possibly even more hundreds, thousands on the housing estate behind that. And that's a real concern, just as all the residents are getting back into their homes and they're contacting Black Sluice because the Black Sluice pumping station shares our name, unfortunately. But they are being passed on to the local officers and their concerns are being dealt with. But I think that the key thing is if the same thing happens this winter, we'll be in exactly the same position. Thank you.
Lovely. Thank you very much, Daniel. Right, we shall now move to questions from the committee for the Internal Drainage Board. Please indicate to me myself or the vice-chairman if you wish to speak and councillor Wimhurst.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Daniel, for a great report there. This question relates to item one really with regards to the Fens twenty-one hundred plus programme. So in August, the committee considered a report on the Lincolnshire Coast twenty-one hundred programme, which included a three hundred and thirty million pound estimate of expenditure. At this stage, are there any estimates on the cost of the Fens twenty-one hundred programme?
I think, Mr Chair, it's probably best to wait till the next item because that's what Amy's going to speak on. I sit on the board for the Fens twenty-one hundred. I'm just here as a cheerleader for Amy.
No worries. Thank you.
Councillor Whitaker.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Daniel, for your excellent report. The bit that interests me is the cliff beck. This is in my constitutional area and also I have a reservoir or I'm going to get a reservoir. It looks like the reservoir is going to sit straight on top of the cliff beck. So are you going to get it redirected so that Sleaford gets drainage in future? Thank you.
Unfortunately, I believe the cliff beck and the north beck go just above where the reservoir's going to be. So I don't believe there's any intentions for that to be redirected into the reservoir. The latest testing on water in the south forty-foot, which obviously isn't the same place, is that it's not of suitable quality to pull into the reservoir. So I don't know whether that's going to be a similar situation for the cliff beck. But it's not our project, it's just obviously an interest from the Drainage Board from the extra water in the area.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Corey.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Daniel. It was even better second time around because I understood more of it this time. So if I see it again, I'll be coming for a job. Some of the items I wanted to ask you questions on came out in questioning when you came to NK, I think it was last week or the week before. So if you just bear with me, you talked about funding mechanisms, which you just touched on again in your summing up. And you said that funding for the special levy is no longer fit for purpose because of changes to local government finance. Could you just explain that, please?
So the special levy element of our budget, if I use Black Sluice as an example because I can quote those figures, around about fifty-one percent of our guaranteed income, if you like, the special levy income comes from the council. That's about one and a half million pounds. The other forty-nine percent comes from drainage rates. So we send drainage rates out direct to agricultural occupiers of land within the board's area. The urban areas is funded through the councils, through the council tax. So where it used to be a separate entity for the councils, and they used to collect it on our behalf... it got merged when we weren't allowed any more taxes and all that sort of thing into just the council tax. But that council, that element was always reimbursed by central government. So as that percentage got reduced further and further and further, that wasn't being funded from central government anymore and the local councils were having to pick up the tab on that themselves. And the special interest group is something being run by the Local Government's Association. There's 40 councils now signed up to that to try and get some buy-in to central government, to revisit that element, to make it fairer for the district and borough councils. And IDBs generally, and also our national membership body, which is the Association of Drainage Authorities, are also involved in that and making representations to that effect.
Thank you. As a supplementary to that, last time you mentioned business rates that currently, and we all know that business rates are an issue for local government, not so much for county councils, but certainly for district councils. And that if the funding mechanism were changed, that could actually benefit you.
I think the difficulty I've been led to believe on the business rates is it resets every five years. So if an area is developed, the land inevitably moves from being agricultural to either residential or commercial. So if it's moved to commercial, then the commercial rates are paid to the council and then they are then passed on to the IDBs through the special levy. So the land use changes, so the charge changes as well. The problem with that is of those thousands of pounds that get moved over, if it resets every five years for that council, they don't see the benefits of that going forward on a long-term basis, only until the next five-year review.
Thank you. Final question. First of all, I'm going to start with a statement that internal drainage boards, unlike Environment Agency, is that you're not statutory consultancy on planning, which, you know, is when we heard about your previous slide and in councillor Whitaker's division with Handel Chase and Cliff Beck is quite significant. So my final question is, if I may, Chairman, the recommissioning of the Black Slough Pumping Station. Have you got any comment to make on that and how, if that were recommissioned, it may prevent houses being flooded in the future?
I made it very public in January that it was our belief if the Black Slough Pumping Station was able to run and hadn't been decommissioned, then the 36 homes that were flooded in Boston wouldn't have flooded. That doesn't mean that there's an economic case for anybody to take it on because Black Slough IDB did look to take on the pumping station back in 2017-18. And we couldn't make the economic case as a very small organisation to spend the amount of money that was required on the Black Slough Pumping Station. The Environment Agency have committed to running a simulation from January 2025 to compare it to the current modelling, to see how things work. And also going forward, I've been told 2027, they're going to revisit that modelling for the whole of the South Forty Foot catchment. So I think there's positive things coming out of that. But in our view, the Black Slough Pumping Station, if it could be run and could be financially viable, it would have protected those 36 homes in January.
Thank you very much. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your report. You may have just inadvertently answered my question, but you referred earlier to the Bellwind scheme, you couldn't access that. That might have been part of what you've just explained, but you didn't actually mention it. What is the Bellwind scheme?
I apologise. The Bellwind scheme is a fund that can be accessed by district and borough councils. I believe the county council, but I'm not 100% sure. I'm getting nods, so that's good. Where if a threshold of additional cost for those councils is met, and that's based on the turnover of a council, they can get funding for the work over and above their normal costs from central government. And that is pretty much on a prove that you've had these additional costs and will pay it. Where the IDB, if the affected council hasn't enacted the Bellwind scheme, the IDBs don't have access to that fund.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chair, and apologies for my late arrival. I was in another meeting in this building. I don't know if I need to declare an interest, I will, that I'm a member of the Welland and Deepings IDB, which is an excellent organisation, well-run by Karen Daft and her team. And every time I go, I learn another issue that is facing water management in Lincolnshire. And they do a fantastic job. The funding does need to be sorted out and I think it's more likely to be sorted out from Westminster than it is from here. As districts, we suffer from the kind of unforeseeable charges, rates that are passed on to us. And unlike the Police and Crime Commissioner and the County Council, we are not allowed to include the drainage rates as part of our annual council tax bill, even though for us it's significant and for Boston Borough, it's horrendous. It really should be listed as a separate item so that people, residents, know what their council tax is being spent on and how much of it is going to the IDB and being well spent there. IDBs do great work on wildlife. At the IDB meetings of Welland and Deeping, we talk about mitten crabs and mink all the time and the success that we have and how we measure the success we have in those two species. Other species are also encouraged by water management. But that's my main question to you, Daniel, is the, how much do IDBs believe in kind of traditional river restoration or rather water management restoration? I want to say that managing water sometimes is like managing children. They need to be able to run about where they like for a bit. And so can you say anything about whether or not IDBs would rather get the water straight out to sea or whether they're actively trying to get meandering flows and breaks in the world? Are you trying to speed it up or slow it down?
As a drainage board with our current powers, speaking on behalf of Black Slough, I would like to see them all concrete, polished and the water going out as quickly as possible because that is effectively why we are there. Drains, rather than rivers, are man-made. They are there to drain the land, they're there to reclaim the land from the sea. That is their whole purpose. That doesn't mean that we don't take the environmental aspects of our job seriously. We maintain fringes on drains for water bowl habitat. We put owl boxes up. We consider the environment and bird surveys and all these things. We do all this and we do it willingly because we don't want to damage the environment either. What we don't do is we wouldn't look for a man-made drain to be left to meander. A river that flows by gravity has the option to do that sort of thing and make a difference. By the time it gets to an IDB, we're talking about a maximum of five to six metres above sea level. So effectively, the water runs down all those hills and gets to a big bathtub at the bottom of the hill. And that's where the internal drainage boards come out because that water can't get any further without some help. So our systems and our man-made drains and our pumping stations are designed to drag that water to a point where we can dispose of it either into an EA main river or directly out to sea. So I don't think meandering and letting a drain take a natural course is an issue. But the other environmental aspects, we all have our own biodiversity action plans and nature recovery strategies, strategies or whatever they're going to become next April, are all being worked on hard by all the IDBs and we take that aspect seriously.
Thank you, Chair, for a very clear answer, very unambiguous. Could I be cheeky and ask the same question to the Environment Agency?
Yeah, don't say why not. Please, Morgan.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. So like I say, there are challenges in managing lowland river systems. And I don't want to steal Amy's thunder too much, but Amy's going to lay out some of those challenges as we see it. So perhaps if I let Amy do her presentation first and if there's any questions that come out of that, then we'll happily take those together.
Yep, lovely. Thank you. Have any more questions? No. Oh, councillor Ashton.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. If I may beg your indulgence on this one, just a couple of questions that I'd be interested in answering. First of all, on the Lincolnshire reservoir, could you possibly advise us, Daniel, what the drawdown flows required for that reservoir are for that reservoir to be compliant with reservoir legislation? And how does that compare with the discharge capacity of the South Forty Foot and the current outfall of the South Forty Foot at Boston? My further question is just around special levy and it's to ask whether there is any appetite among drainage boards to consider the complete disaggregation of drainage rate collection from council tax, which would solve the model that we have and the involvement of councils in an area which they would never intended to be involved in, in a sense. Although that would, of course, put an onus on board either individually or perhaps ideally collectively to collect those monies from liable ratepayers themselves. Thank you.
I'm going to go down the road if I can't really answer either of those in detail. What I can say is the Reservoirs Act will require the operators of the reservoir to reduce the level by one metre per day in an emergency situation. I don't know the volumes of water, but they'll be considerable to be able to achieve that. And in the South Forty Foot catchment and the South Forty Foot drain that is already full, that's only going to increase the amount of water, which will also back water up the Highland carriers and make a difference to the whole system. So I think that's the concern. Certainly, I'll speak with Anglin Water, they're not here unfortunately, I was hoping they were going to be. And they should be able to provide that information. They are focusing on the Fens reservoir at the moment, so things have gone quite quiet on the Lincolnshire reservoir. It's just starting to ramp back up. So hopefully there'll be some more information coming out from there shortly. And as part of their second consultation, Black Slough were very direct, shall we say? You wouldn't expect anything else from me in addressing those concerns. On the special levy funding, I think we'll let the special interest group do their work. I know where you're coming from, from disaggregation, we've discussed it numerous times. From my point of view, and I think generally Lincolnshire IDBs, we're not in favour of that model that is being used elsewhere in the country. Although never say never, it's not something that we're looking at. We're almost going back to NRA, National Rivers Authority days and those sort of funding mechanisms, which I don't think would achieve the aims of the special levy. And a special levy being charged on the properties within the IDB area is key because the water that comes into our area isn't all necessary generated from within the area. I spoke about gravity and the water coming down, what we call the Highlands, the Highlands of Bourne and that sort of area. That water comes into our system and we then dispose of it or it comes through the Highland carriers of the Environment Agency. They're not contributing to that water getting through the IDB systems. And there is another piece of work that's waiting for parliamentary time where that will enable us to be able to protect more area, expand the IDB areas. Currently, an IDB is prohibited from spending money outside of the IDB area. So in the Black Slough area, there's villages such as Billingsborough Point and Fokingham, all those sort of things, just literally on the boundary of the Black Slough area, and this is replicated across the country, where we can't spend board money there to protect that and make that water flow into our system better because of legislation. So that's where we rely on councils to actually look at the options and build up Common Works Programme on a partnership basis through the county council to be able to support those. So yeah, I'm not an advocate for that National Rivers Authority model.
Thank you very much. Are we everybody happy? Well done. Councillor Corey.
Thank you. This is councillor Ashton's fault. The Highland water payment, we, you know, we had images of red deer and whisky and heather and then you mentioned Bourne and it just disappeared. Could you explain what the Highland water payment is and the fact that it's not statutory and what negative impact that has on your ability to pay for water management as a result of water that comes from the Highlands?
This is based on water that comes into the IDB systems, generally from the Highlands, also from the Environment Agency watercourses. So we then take that water and progress its disposal out to sea effectively. So that isn't something that the Environment Agency are 100% committed to having to pay. They always have and even last year we got to a point where it was all paid. But there is a risk going forward and that's a recognised risk, particularly with the Witham and Humber Boards, where if that money wasn't paid, they wouldn't be able to continue doing their jobs and at least two out of their four boards would effectively become bankrupt.
Thank you. And just finally, Chairman, honestly, and there's no political appetite currently for those Highland water payments to be made statutory?
We have been made aware yesterday of a Highland water consultation. We're not sure whether that's internal within the Environment Agency or whether that will be coming out wider to involve IDBs as well, which clearly we believe it should.
Thank you. But no more answers since councillor Corey's left a little bit input, so I think we're all done. Take a breath now, Daniel. Right, thank you very much. We can now move on to our presenters of the Lincolnshire County Council, Chris Miller and Matt Harrison. I'd like to start with Chris. Alma, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I will keep this very brief, mindful we've got substantive items still to come. Councillor Brooks has obviously updated on the Section 19 situation and following the storms of Beth Henk in January 2025, which you'll be aware has generated a huge amount of work and involvement for all organisations, we've got a number of work streams that are ongoing to work with communities and others to look at maintenance issues and understand those challenges better. Working closely, I have to say, with Anglin Water, with the Environment Agency, with our IDB colleagues. And as part of that, there is a capital programme of work that has been developed, which will form a paper in a forthcoming committee. So if it is okay, Chairman, I will probably leave it there and just reassure you that there will be a more detailed paper to come to outlining the types of work streams that we've got going on and where that funding is being spent.
Absolutely, Chris. Did you? No, fine. We'll now move to questions. Do you have any questions? None? That was incredibly swift, wasn't it? Right, we can now move to a conclusion. So I'd like to propose that the presenters be thanked for attending the committee and sharing information on their flood risk management activities, that the committee's satisfaction be recorded and of the progress being made by local flood risk management authorities in improving and developing flood resilience and that the next report for the flood risk partners be received on the 16th of January 26. Can I have a show of hands, please? Lovely, thank you. Item six, Fens 2100 plus programme. This report is found in pages 29 to 34 of the Agenda Pack and will be presented by Chris Miller, Head of Environment, Amy Shaw, Fens Flood Risk Manager of the Environment Agency, Andy Bailey, Environment and Agency, and Matt Harrison, Flood Risk. Agency, Andy Bailey, Environment and Agency, and Matt Harrison, flood risk. Do you start with Chris Miller? Matt Harrison again, sorry.
No, that's all right, thank you, chair. Now, I'll pick this up, mindful, again, I will keep this very brief, because we have Amy with us here today from the Environment Agency to make a presentation, which I think will really set out really well the scope of the Fens 2100+ Programme. Just to briefly say, the covering report hopefully just gives you a bit of context as to what's involved here and why this is important to Lincolnshire County Council. If I may, I will take that report as read, and hopefully that's some helpful background, and pass straight over to Amy for the presentation, which will hopefully visually and clearly set out some of the key aspects of the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt, and thank you, chair, for this invite today. So I'm Amy Shaw, I am the flood risk manager for the Fens, and when I talk about the Fens, we are talking about the Cambridgeshire and Lincolnshire Fens, so just to sort of set that context before I start. Thank you for the opportunity to come here today. I really just wanted to sort of set the scene around Fens 2100, to give you a background to the programme, and particularly the partnership that we have alongside Lynx County Council, and just give you that background about the challenges that we're working to explore through Fens 2100, which I think sort of a lot of them have already been alluded to through the conversations that we've had, and the presentations from both Morgan and Daniel. As I think you're aware, you've already heard presentations from Deb Hickton at the last session around Lincolnshire 2100, and this is sort of in a very similar vein, so obviously we're the next geography down, and we are working to very much look at that longer term challenge of flood risk across the Fens. Next slide, please, Jess. So apologies if I'm telling you things you already know, but just to really set the scene of the Fens as a landscape as a whole, and I think the thing, the most important thing to take away is that the Fens is an entirely manmade landscape, historically one that was below sea level, and that map that you can see on the left is from 1060. The map on the right is from 1664, and that's the beginning of the landscape that you see today. So historically, marshland, lowland landscape, majority of it below sea level, that was reclaimed from the sea in the 1600s. So if you can move on to the next slide. The importance of understanding the history of the landscape is so critical, because the landscape that we're working with in the Fens really sets the scene for the challenges that we've got going forward, and it really is a unique challenge. There are other similar landscapes, places like the Somerset Levels, places like the Isle of Axholme, but the Fens is far and beyond one of the largest lowland landscapes that we've got in the UK. I've put a timeline up here of the history of the Fens, which is really fascinating, and, you know, I haven't got time to go through it all in detail today, but I'm very happy to talk to you more about it offline. But just two really key dates that I really wanted to sort of, to highlight today. The first is actually the 1600s, so most of you hopefully are aware of Vermoeden, who came over from the Netherlands, and he was bought, a Dutch engineer that was bought over to essentially design the drainage of the landscape in the Fens. And very much, the Fens that you see today still reflects his vision of that 17th century. So the rivers were, the main rivers were straightened, the drains that Daniel referred to were all dug, in line with his vision. So we're actually dealing with a landscape that was actively created back in that sort of 1600s. And then the second key point, timescale that I want to sort of flag is the post-war, so the 1950s. And that was another point at which we had quite significant investment in the Fens, and that was primarily as a result of the need for food production after the Second World War, and then after the 1953 flood, which significantly impacted the Fens, you saw another significant period of investment in the flood risk management assets across the Fens. So the important point to take away from that is that most of the assets that we're working with today are the same, are the ones that were built after that post-war period. Moving on to the next slide, Jess, that'd be great, thank you. The Fens is an incredibly valuable landscape, that investment and that legacy of investment in the flood risk management assets that underpin it have allowed this landscape to develop into the valuable landscape that it is today. It's often a quite undervalued landscape, and it's one that I don't think a lot of people really recognise the value that it brings to UK GDP. We're starting to build the figures, we really want to make sure that as Fens 2100, we tell the true story of the value that the Fens delivers to UK PLC. We know that in 2021 it contributed 11.5 billion to the UK economy, and it is actually importantly, one of the, only of the three regions in the UK that actually provides a net contribution to GDP, so it contributes above and beyond, so it gives more to UK GDP than it takes. This is an infographic that we've produced through Fens 2100 to try and tell the story of this landscape, and just some critical numbers that I'd like to sort of bring your attention to. So we've got over 3,000 miles of watercourses, so we've got, you know, a large length of watercourses, we've got over 318 pumping stations, about 400,000 people who live at flood risk within that landscape. But importantly, we've also got 96% of that land is classed as agriculture, so we've obviously got only 4%, which is that urban area. So we are, you know, very, you know, you'll often hear the Fens referred to as the breadbasket of Britain, and that is, you know, those figures are reflecting that. We've got about nearly 4,000 farms, those farms are large, they are not, they are not, they're not small, they are large commercial enterprises, and they're very valuable to the UK economy. So it's trying to demonstrate the value that this landscape brings to UK PLC. If you can get on to the next slide, thank you. This is a slide which is really telling that story of this landscape, and it, we can't take away from the fact that fundamentally the Fens is a landscape which, as a function of its history, is one of the lowest-lying parts of England, and the majority of this landscape is below sea level, so we are working with that as a fact. Being below sea level and that reclaimed landscape mean that the Fens is probably more at risk from flooding, from rivers in the sea, from land subsidence, so that peak drying from that drainage has meant that we have, we are having continual subsidence, we've had it for a long time and that is continuing. We're also more at risk from rising sea levels because of that low-lying nature. What these maps are demonstrating is the importance of the flood risk management assets that we have across the Fens, and the critical job that they play in sustaining this landscape. The left-hand map is showing you essentially where the mean high water springs, so that highest highest tide, would come to if those coastal defences were not there. So what that is effectively showing you is where the tide would be if those coastal defences are not there, and that is a function of the fact, as I've said, you know, it is below sea level, it is a bowl, it was originally below sea level, we reclaimed it. So those coastal defences are critical in sustaining that landscape. The map on the right is a piece of work that we have done through Fens 2100, which is trying to, again, demonstrate the importance of those inland assets, so those Highland carriers, those raised defences that we've already talked about, but also the pumping stations and the sluices in sustaining the, or in preventing that inland fluvial flooding. So what that map on the right shows is a very hypothetical situation, and I will reiterate that is hypothetical, but it would show if we were to stop pumping, if we were to stop doing, between ourselves and the internal drainage boards, the activity that we currently do, that area that is dark blue would essentially be subject to permanent inundation within a few years of a depth to about one and a half metres. So that is, again, is that function of the landscape that we're working with, so we're really trying to build the importance and to demonstrate that we're not just working with, the flood risk management assets within this landscape are critical, they are critical infrastructure to underpinning the value that it delivers to UK PLC. But even with those assets in place, it is important to recognise that the Fens is at flood risk, it has and will continue to have a residual flood risk. So you can see on the left a timeline of significant events, flood risk events that have happened across the Fens, and you can see, apologies, they are a little small, but we will share the slides after, but you can see that they are, they are, we are seeing flood risk events happen more regularly across this landscape. So three events happening between 1947 and 1998, but seven occurring since 2000, of which five were in the last six years. So you can see that increase in regularity of events happening across the Fens. If you can see, move on to the next slide, Jess, that'd be great. So part of the job of Fens 2100 is to demonstrate and to improve our understanding of the role that those flood risk management assets play across the Fens, and this is an infographic which tells you the story of the assets that exist at the moment. We've got an incredibly complex and extensive system of assets, far more than other parts of the country, and again, that is the function of this landscape, we need them. But it does mean that that makes a very complex and complicated system to manage. We've highlighted on here some of the really important and some of the assets that I'm sure some of you are aware of, so we've already mentioned Hopple, we've also got Tid Pumping Station, if you come down into the Cambridgeshire Fens, you've got things like the St Germain's Pumping Station and the Ouse Washes. We've got a wide range of assets, so we've got, as I've mentioned, we've got over 17,000 different flood risk management assets across the Fens, we've got a huge number, and they are quite wide-ranging. So we've got pumping stations, as Daniel alluded to, we're below sea level, and the lowest part of the Fens is 2.7 metres below sea level at Holm, so down near Peterborough. At 2.7 metres below sea level, we don't have gravity to get it out to sea, so we have to pump it. So those pumping stations are critical in lifting that water up to get it out to sea. We've also got embankments, as we've spoken about before, so we've got that whole range of high-level carriers, so where you will see that the watercourses are raised up above your head. So those high-level carriers and those embankments are critical to, again, to the role within the system. And then we've got a whole network of wider drainage channels and sluices alongside the four, the main rivers of the Ouse, the Welland, the Witham and the Neen. The important thing to recognise is, again, because of that function of this lowland managed system, these assets have to work as a system. You can't manage them on an asset-by-asset basis, they are critically interlinked, so one decision that we make in one place absolutely interlinks with a decision on another place, and that's where the partnership between ourselves, particularly as drainage boards and the Environment Agency, is so critical, because we pass the water between us, and it works as a system, and we have to make decisions about what we do now, but also into the future, together. So if you can move on to the next. So fundamentally, we are delivering, responding to two challenges through Fens 2100. I've alluded to and spoken about the critical importance of the asset management infrastructure that underpins the Fens, but the real challenge that we've got with that infrastructure is that it is ageing. I mentioned that majority of it is, was built in around the 1960s. You only have to go and visit some of these pumping stations, which are incredible, you know, we've got pictures up on here of, you know, some inside of the pumping stations, but we are, we are working with assets that are at the end or beyond the end of their design life. They are doing an amazing job, but we have been pushing them for a while. So we've also got embankments which were built over a century ago, so they are the embankments that were originally designed by Vermoeden, so we are working with those embankments. They are not built to modern-day engineering standards, so that conversation that we were having earlier about the importance of grass cutting, that is why these, they are not built, they don't have the engineering standards that we have for modern-day embankments, so we have to manage them in a way that recognises the embankments that we've got. So we are, we've got a real challenge of ageing infrastructure, and given the complexity and the scale, that is a challenge for us. So that's one of our most important challenges that we need to work to. And the second one is a much wider challenge, and it's very similar to the challenge that builds on the work that Deb Hickton talked about when she came to see you at the last session around Lincolnshire coast, and it's that conversation about, fundamentally, that there's going to need to be a conversation about the wider future of this landscape. We are doing our absolute best, and we've, you know, everybody, you know, has been doing an amazing job in sustaining this landscape, you know, it has been incredibly well managed. But fundamentally, that challenge is getting more and more difficult. If you bring in rising sea levels, if you look at the system and the complexity that we've got to, we've got within this landscape, we are facing a future where we may need to be doing something differently. And unfortunately, that future is not 2100, it is likely to be in the next 10, 15 years, that we will need to be in a position where we are really clear about the direction of travel that we need for this later location. Very similar timescale to the conversations that you were having on Lincolnshire coast. So there is a real, we talk about sort of place-making conversations, so what is the role of this landscape going forward, and then what does that mean for the asset management investment that we need to make as risk management authorities that underpins that? Fundamentally, as risk management authorities, we are not the decision-makers of what happens with this landscape, but we do enable that. So we need to have that direction of travel and that understanding, and then that allows us to make the right investment in the right places, that deliver, you know, that functioning and flourishing Fens that we all want. Next slide, please. So this is just, so the way that we are responding to those two challenges are through the Fens 2100 partnership. So that map on the right just shows you the landscape that we cover. It is large, it's a 5,000 square kilometre landscape, it covers the Great Ouse, the Neen, the Welland, the Witham, and goes up into the steeping where we then meet the Lincolnshire coastwork. And the reason that we work at that landscape level is because that is all, that is all of the area that, if you look at that historic map, that is the Fennland landscape, and building a case for investment at that landscape level is possibly easier to do. You know, we do deliver a lot to UK PLC, so recognise the importance of working at that landscape level. We have a great range of partners working around the table, obviously with Lincolnshire County Council, we also have the other risk management authorities, plus the internal drainage boards, plus representatives from people like the National Farmers Union, Angling Water and Natural England. Next slide, please, Jess, sorry. So we, within the Fens, we've been running for about a year and a half, two years, so we are relatively new in the scale of the 2100 programmes, and we've been doing a lot of work to really understand the challenges that we're responding to, and to make sure that we're really clear on our ambitions and our starting point within Fens 2100. And our ambition is to really transform the way that we invest in the critical FCRM infrastructure across the Fens, so that we put ourselves in the best possible position for the future. So to respond to both that asset management placekeeping challenge, but also that longer-term place-making challenge. It would be, it is, there are a lot of challenges, but we are really, really clear that we want to come up with solutions, we really want to try and move this forward. So we have developed, as the partnership, our very, our starting premise, which I've put up on the screen today, that we believe are non-negotiables. So the Fens, we want recognised as that valuable landscape, both nationally and regionally. So we're not asking the question of whether the Fens should be there or not, rather, how do we, what does it look like in the future, what role does it play? You know, it doesn't necessarily mean that it will be the same, the Fens has adapted over time, we created it, and now we probably have to have that conversation again, we need to have that second conversation. But it is our generation's role to make that decision, and it has to be a decision. This is not a landscape that you can, will sort itself out, it needs that active management and that active decision. So we've talked about, you know, the assets that underpin the Fens are critical in securing that value, they, you know, they are critical infrastructure in this landscape, but sustaining them is getting more and more challenging, and we need to be open and honest about that. There is a need to act now, so although we're called Fens 2100, you know, essentially, you know, it is, there is an urgency to act in this landscape, to ensure we maintain it. But as we've said, you know, there is no single organisation that can solve this challenge, that's why we've got the partnership. This is a challenge and a landscape which has to be delivered through working in partnership, it can't, there's no one single organisation that can respond to it. Next slide, Jess, sorry. So what are we actually doing? So I've talked a lot about sort of the evidence that we've been building, so essentially the Fens 2100 has three arms to it. So we have a case for change, so very much- So we have a case for change, so very much that is about our, our evidence base for change. So I've shared some of the thinking with you today, so it's very much building that case for continued and future investment in that asset base across the Fens. So we will be talking about the value, the critical role that those assets deliver to the Fens, and some of the choices that we will need to make going forward. That, so that's about highlighting it up beyond the landscape, up into those that we're going to need that support from, so up into government, up into Westminster. We're very clear that we need to be an evidence-based programme, you know, we need to have that very strong evidence base that underpins what we're doing. So we are developing a series of what we're calling baseline reports, so for each of those catchments across the Fens, we're working really hard to make sure we've got a very good understanding of the role of the current assets that exist across the Fens, so both between ourselves and the drainage boards, you know, what do those assets look like, what is the current condition of that asset base, what role do they deliver? So that means that we've got that really good starting point. But equally, we're really clear that we can't just be a, you know, a talking shop, we need to have, you know, we need to be making differences on the ground. So our ambition is to launch a sort of decade of action, which is about really, really working over the next ten years to get ourselves in the best possible position for the future. So we know that we're not necessarily, we're making investment decisions at the moment more on an asset-by-asset basis, and actually, in this landscape, we need to be taking them at that more catchment level. We need to be investing the money that we do have in the best possible way, so that it achieves the best possible value for that landscape. So we are, will be working to produce sort of catchment investment strategies and building a business case for investment in those catchments. So similar to the conversation that you had on Lincolnshire coast about the three hundred and thirty million, you know, building that business case for that investment that we think we need over the next ten years. You asked about the cost, that is likely to be in the billions, not in the millions. So that's the scale of investment that we think is going to be needed to sustain, to keep those assets in that landscape in the best possible position for the future. Next slide, Jess. It's just a highlight, so this is all available and we are really happy to share it, so we've produced about twenty-seven thirty different pieces of evidence so far over the past year, which have really, really enabled us to hone and to understand the challenge that we're responding to. So we've been working to understand the vulnerability of the assets that we've got across the system, the condition of the assets. We've, you know, we've been out working, having lots of conversations with the drainage boards, but also with landowners that have been impacted by events across the Fens and will be impacted by future decisions, so it's talking to them. And then we're learning from others, so we often get, you know, asked, you know, how do we learn from the Dutch? Yes, we do, we have lots of conversations with the Dutch, they have a different system, they have a legal basis for protection, which puts them in a very different starting point, but there is certainly things we can learn from them, you know, and we do, we do do that. Final slide, please. So this is just to highlight the two publications that will be coming out later this year, so we will be producing in sort of, sorry, in November this time, we will be launching those baseline reports and they will be publicly available. They will, they are, they will give you that, that, that understanding of the current situation, so they will be a really consistent evidence base across that landscape. They will also tell you at the whole landscape level that story of actually the role of those assets, the condition of those assets, so it's that launchpad for allow us to deliver that case for change. And then the ambition is for early next year to launch our case for change, and that is very much that ask to government, to, to, to raise up, to raise awareness of the challenges that we've got in this landscape, and to highlight some of the solutions and the help that we need to move it forward. And final slide, sorry. So just in terms of our ask, I guess, we, we are very, you know, lucky to have Matt on our board and that Lincolnshire County Council support of the partnership, and we would very much welcome that support going forward of that. We would like to bring back to you more detail, that case for change and some of those key messages, because one of the critical things is that we, we talk in a consistent voice across this landscape, you know, this is, we don't want this to be a, you know, this is a landscape where we need that consistency of narrative, because that makes for a much stronger case, so we would like to share that with you. And then going forward, the conversations that, you know, the Lincolnshire coast conversations of those place-making conversations, it's likely that we're going to have to, but it's not likely, we are going to have to have the same conversations for the Fens, and Lincolnshire County Council's role in that is really crucial. So I will leave it there, and hopefully that's.
And breathe. Yeah, any additional, I will echo it again, any additional information is greatly appreciated. Like I said, we do know the complexity of this, and we do know the importance and the urgency of it, so yet again, if you could hand out anything to Chris, I'm sure he'll make sure it's circulated and absorbed as best we can, thank you. Right, before we move to questions, I'd just like to introduce representatives from district councils who are significantly covered by the Fens twenty-one programme, that have been invited to date. We have councillor Tom Ashton of the East Lindsay District Council, Gary Hewson of Lincoln, City of Lincoln, and Stephen Bunny representing West Lindsay District Council. So I'm happy now to move to questions if Amy's happy to answer something, now she's got to wrap back. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Amy, for the extensive report. Have you had any feedback yet from the current government about potential funding availabilities? Because I do have concerns that the present government and the previous government didn't really care about farmland. And the reason I say that is they're allowing extensive tens of thousands of acres to potentially go under solar farms, and that'll be lost forever, so they seem to have the attitude that, oh, well, we'll just buy it in from abroad. And I really do worry that the present government aren't going to support, have you had any sort of feedback on that? Thank you.
So, very much that, that case for change that I was talking about is, is that conversation to government. We, we're very clear that this is a valuable landscape, and we're doing, we're doing a lot of work to really describe that value. It's not just in terms of farming, I mean, the farming is absolutely critical, but that farming also underpins a huge manufacturing, logistics, supply chain that is far wider than is recognised at the moment. And also that those assets also underpin growth in this landscape, you know, so really, really trying to tell that story. We, we hope that when that case for change lands, that, that, that value is recognised. Certainly the conversations we're having with sort of government departments, you know, they, they understand, you know, the importance. And there are national policies around things like food security that have all been launched that, that demonstrate that this government do recognise the value, but very much what we're trying to do is to highlight that and to give that, give that evidence base that makes it very difficult to challenge.
If I could just have a quick comment on that one. Do you think conversely, it could positively impact the Fens area for flood and prevention? Because if we lose so much good farmland, although it's perhaps not classed as grade A farm, it's still very good farmland, if we lose so much, it will strengthen the case for the protection of the Fens area?
I think, I think the, the future, I think there is a, there is a conversation to be had about the role of this landscape as a whole, and, you know, it was originally that that drainage was put in to underpin food production. We know from things like the Ukraine war, you know, that the role and the importance of having UK food supply was, was highlighted at that point. So I think that the role of agriculture and the importance of having UK-grown food is recognised. I think there are no decisions made at the moment about the future, but I think what we're trying to do is to highlight that there will need to be decisions made. We will need as jointly to decide what we want this landscape to be and the value that we want this landscape to deliver to UKPLC. And then that will, then that will allow us to build that business case for that investment in the assets. So at the moment, you know, we, we need to decide what the job of that is for this land, and then we can build the appropriate business case to underpin that.
Thank you. Councillor Whitaker.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Amy, for that super, super report. You talk about the equipment being put in in the sixties, and it's now sixty-five years old. Would you really be driving around in a sixty-five-year-old car? Do the government realise how old and decrepit some of this? I've seen some of these pumping stations. The replacement of them is obviously the first thing that really needs to be on our minds at present time, because if we get a couple of big storms and these old-fashioned pumping stations have to be used and break down, then basically, the land in Lincolnshire's going to flood. Do the government really believe that they can just leave it to one side and not get things done now rather than in the future? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think, personally, I believe that the, the, the challenge of the Fens is quite a hidden challenge, and that is very much the role that we're doing within Fens twenty-one hundred, to highlight it and escalate it up. I actually think, you know, we've done a fantastic job of sustaining this landscape, and actually, that, that recognition that there is a job that is a three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four-hour job, that is not well-understood. So very much part of the role of Fens twenty-one hundred is to, to raise up that understanding and to produce the evidence that, 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 that improves that understanding. So we very much believe that it is important that people understand that the assets that we're working with in this landscape, you know, ourselves and the IDBs, they are, have done a, they have done a great job, but they are, they are at the end and beyond their design life, and the baselines that we are producing will, will, will tell you that, and will give the evidence to back that up.
Thank you.
Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chair. I want to start by saying that we'll probably have lots of debate about water management in the Fens, but it'll all come out in the wash. The, I think, Amy, you did an admirable job of, I mean, the presentation was great, you did an admirable job of not mentioning the elephant in the room, which is climate change. Man-made climate change. You did mention climate resilience, you did mention rising sea, sea levels, there's no getting away from it, that storm is coming, that metaphorical and literal storm is, is coming and is, is on us. Storm Henk and Storm Babette, and any analysis of the rainfall statistics for IDBs, which IDBs are presented with generally, shows that while the overall level of rain might be similar on an annual basis, the intensity and the way that the rain arrives is different. That's why we've got hundreds of section nineteen notices. So, I mean, you could almost call this Project Knut, because if, if we fix it by twenty-one hundred, who knows what's, what's coming after that? I wanted to ask the question I asked earlier about natural water management, does natural water management, river restoration, possibly even the sacrifice of land have any part in this, or is it all, as Daniel said, polished drains and getting the water out straight away? My, my forebail was a migrant worker or possibly a refugee who came to this country to dig the Fens in the seventeenth century and did a fair job as, as far as I can see, but that seventeenth-century infrastructure is, is not going to be able to contend. So if you, I don't know if you were saying, Councillor Whitaker, that everything that's sixty-five years old is, is old and decrepit? But some, some of the, the infrastructure is, is solid. Obviously, we, we need some more and I'd support this project entirely, but if you could answer the question about what part nature has in solving these natural problems, I'd be grateful.
Thank you. So I think we have to recognise, as sort of Daniel alluded to, this, this is a man-made system, so this is an unnatural man-made system. So for us, natural flood management has a role, but we have to think about what that means in a Fens-specific role. So going forward, given, if you think about, so I, we have to manage water as a whole in this landscape, so we have a twin challenge of both too much water and not enough water in this landscape, and, you know, the, the, the dry summer that we've just seen is, is an example of that. You know, we're in this cycle now where we're having not, not enough water in the summer and too much in the winter, and we need to think in that whole picture about what the future means for us. So I think going forward, there will absolutely be a role for storing more water on land. I think the important thing is to us to, to decide where the best place to do that is, and to actively make a decision to store it in the right places and store it where it's safe or it doesn't cause a danger to, to lives and livelihood. So I think storing water is a, is a really important natural, natural flood management solution for us in the Fens. I think, I, I do echo Daniel's point, I think, you know, the role of remeandering rivers is more difficult for us, you know, we, we don't often want to store slow water down, it is, it is pretty slow, you know, it is more about storing it. So, so for us, I think probably flood storage, and flood storage in the right places is a really important thing that we're going to have to consider doing more of in the future, because that as a solution has multiple benefits for, for the environment, but also for, for reducing flood risk, but also for improving water resources as well. So it's, it's definitely, will have a critical role in the future.
Thank you very much. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. Again, great report, thank you. You mentioned the Netherlands in your report just then about what they do, and obviously they face similar problems as we do, especially in our particular area. The Netherlands government encourages farmers to grow deep root crops, so the drainage system natural is, is better and more efficient. And they also encourage more trees and small forest growth as well to help with this, obviously this is natural again. Could you give us an idea, because you talk about some, you spoke about radical things you may have to do in the future to really combat this, what specifically are you taking from places like the Netherlands, either technology-wise or another plans for the future, please, for that? Obviously, I feel as though once this land is gone, either sacramental part, you know, getting rid of it, would this also be a bigger expense for the rest of Lincolnshire as well? Obviously, it would be classed as storage, obviously you would lose land, but would it be more expensive as well for the rest of Lincolnshire?
So I think the learning from the Netherlands is really interesting, so I think there's a lot we can take. They have, in terms of their engineering solutions, so, so they have some really interesting coastal engineering solutions, including designs particularly for the mouths of rivers, so those tidal solutions, because that rising sea level is going to be a challenge for, for land that is below sea. So, so at the moment, we, we, within the Fens, hold the tide at certain levels, so places like the Grand Sluice, you know, we actively make a decision to hold the tide. So there will need to be some consideration in the future about where we hold that tide and, and the role of that coastal defences. So the Netherlands have some really innovative thinking around things like end-of-sea, end-of- estuary barriers. They do do sort of that wetland storage, they obviously have a huge amount of their UK, sorry, their GDP at risk, so they, their, their main response is levy raising, it is engineering solutions. But equally, they are also at the point, a similar point as we are, in that they're starting to think honestly about the future. So, so they are starting to recognise that they won't be able to engineer their, their way out of a solution, so they are starting to explore those larger-scale, scale changes that might have to happen in the Netherlands. And I think that their thinking is something that we will need to, you know, learn from and, you know, and explore.
Thank you. Councillor Bunny.
Thank you. I'm hearing quite a lot about the fact that this work is required in less time length than, say, two thousand, two thousand and one hundred, yet our projects are all entitled that. When we went round the North Sea area, looking at the coastal wars, it was quite interesting to see how poorly constructed they are now, and how if they breached, it could cause serious issues in the Skegness, Mabel Thorpe areas. So I'm just wondering why we seem So I'm just wondering why we seem to be concentrating on the title 2100 plus, which actually extras it could be even further in the distance, when really we should be looking at something more urgent than that. And I wonder at the moment, whether we've got lots of pressures on finance and so on, which have got to be resolved, whether we're really putting the case across for these projects strong enough, and by not adapting a slightly different title. Because certainly when you look up on the internet or something and you see it's 2100 plus, you don't necessarily pick up immediately that urgency. We hear all sorts of things in schools and so on, but, and we're taught all sorts of things, but it's actually getting the final definite message across, which I don't see coming through in many of the presentations that I go to.
Thank you. And it is a really good point, and it's, we have had exactly the same debate within, within the team. I think the 2100 sort of name, so, so obviously that started with Thames 2100, and, and it's trying to, so I think these are long-term strategies, because nothing, you know, the decisions are not something that we're saying has to, you know, they will take time to, to put in place, but the reality is, you know, the ambition is that, that we are thinking about where we need to get to by 2100, but the reality is you're probably going to need to be moving to that by 2030, 2040. So, so there are conversations to be had, and I, I don't disagree that, that we need to be bolder in our, in our messaging. Certainly, a lot of the conversations that we've had through the partnership is about, about the importance of being really bold and, and importance of telling that, that story of the urgency. We have got that, that data now that underpins that timeline and does bring that timeline much, much further forward than, than I think any of us had really envisaged it was. So I think, I, I don't disagree. I think we need to, to, to increase that urgency of that narrative. And, you know, there might be, you know, an idea of talking about that land, the timing, sorry, the name, you know. It's one that we've got, but we have definitely talked about whether it's, it's right and will it land. And that case for change that I was talking about, you know, the hot, the partnership is, has been very, very clear with us, that, that they want us to be bold, they want us to be strong, they want us to highlight that urgency. So that's the ambition.
Thank you. councillor Ashton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just as a disclosure of interest, I was involved a little while ago on the Fens 2100 Programme Board through the Regional Flood and Coastal Committee. But it is really outstanding to see and to read and to appreciate the scale of ambition that Fens 2100 is genuinely looking at here. It matches, I think, the scale of ambition of our ancestors in creating the landscape and the ambition to defend it, to protect it, and to adapt it where necessary. You know, there are few assets that we come across in daily life which has the longevity of some of these assets that we're talking about here that have been adapted literally over, over hundreds and hundreds of years. What I always think is really important to bear in mind, and I'm glad that you're capturing it here, is the value, absolutely the value of the land, the homes, the businesses, the economic productivity of an area which stretches across three or four counties. But also, I think it's really important to recognise the inbuilt value of the assets and, and, and be they drains, be they pumping stations, be they flood defences, be they sloughs and seawalls. These are assets that I would imagine today would have a construction value running into the hundreds of billions of pounds, that we haven't got to create these. Our ancestors already did that. Our, I suppose, task now is to build on them, to improve them, to refurbish them, renew them where necessary. And I think if, as part of making the case to government, it is really important to make that observation, that that value in those assets is there. I suppose the question I would ask, picking up on the Dutch question, I was privileged to meet with the Dutch Partners for Water a couple of weeks ago, and the example, what I can offer from a, the way that the Dutch do this stuff, is that while this is a superb collaboration of many, many different partner agencies coming together to make this a success, the Dutch approach would be to bring together the relevant government departments, rather than this simply being something under the Environment Agency, under DEFRA, under one government department. So my question is, what, what sort of music is coming out of government on the work that you're doing? What sort of feedback are you getting from both the top of government on the political side, but also the people charged in the civil service level, to looking at the strategic horizons over the next 80 years or so? Because we've heard here that this is going to come down to money, and the money in the right place with the right people, and I can't recall precisely the quote, but it was a very good one. This is going to come down to money and a huge amount of it, and we know that government doesn't have a lot of money spare. And I would just like to understand what the feedback you folks are getting, that government are really going to back this, because the evidence that we have in Lincolnshire at the moment is that main river maintenance is going in the opposite direction to this. The money available to maintaining assets is going down, not up at the moment.
Thank you. So I think in terms of direction of travel, there is indications from things like the new flood funding consultation, that, you know, that there are, there is definitely this, this government has a direction of travel where they do recognise the importance of existing assets and sustaining existing assets rather than building new ones. So I think that direction of travel is coming through, and we are seeing that shift, and the, the conversations about future capital programmes very much demonstrate that, that recognition of the importance of maintenance. So I think we are seeing a direction of travel, which is really helpful to us within Fens 2100. I think in terms of how this will land, I think that is a difficult one. I think we are, we are starting probably over the next couple of months to start to warm up those conversations. So I think the truth is that, that we don't quite know yet. That is our job over the next few months to try and start landing it. We're confident that we've got the evidence that really backs that up, and we need to now make sure that we, we tell that narrative in a way that makes it land, and that is our ambition, and that is why. And also the importance of it not just, it being a partnership voice is so critical. You know, it is, you know, that, that partnership that we've got, if everybody around that partnership is telling the same story, using the same evidence, using the same numbers, using the same value, that puts it, you know, that, that makes a much stronger case. So I think the answer is we, we really hope it will land, and we're doing everything we can to make sure it does.
Thank you. councillor Corey.
Thank you, Chairman. The problem we have with this scheme and, and getting the buy-in for it is, is that of, of hyperbolic discounting. It's the timescale that people are, are having trouble with, and, and the fact that the timescales are so large, it reduces the value of the impact of, of what you're trying to achieve here. And there's a, there's a cognitive bias for immediate, cheaper, less impactful, less valuable schemes, and that would be a mistake if we didn't take this seriously. We've heard from councillor Baxter that, that his ancestor was one of those people that helped put the infrastructure, we've all benefited from for hundreds of years, because someone hundreds of years ago made that decision for future benefit. We have that opportunity now. But as many people in the room don't agree that the climate is a, is a, climate change is a man-made issue, and also we have an issue that the, the, the future doesn't have a vote, and they're interested in what happens now or in the next four years, whereas policymakers, we really have to make decisions that are going to have a beneficial impact in hundreds of years. Thank you, Chairman.
I don't, I don't disagree. It, it is our job, it's our generation's job to, to make the decision for the next generations. And, and we have a, we have a legacy of history of generations, and we need to, to, to recognise that. But yes, that urgency, we need to make sure as a partnership that we, we, we do highlight, we, we, we recognise that urgency and we really, really do tell that story. And I, I will take away that point about the, the cognitive bias, because I don't disagree with it. I, I think it's important, I just, it's trying to work out how to land this. And that is why we've got that sort of decade of action in our, you know, this isn't about, you know, we're, we're very, you know, strategies can often be taught, you know, classed as, you know, lots of, you know, something that you just, doesn't actually, you don't see any difference on the ground, and we are absolutely determined that we're not one of those, that we are, you will start to see changes and you will start to see different behaviours and different investment decisions happening over the next five, 10 years because of the partnership work that we're doing. So that is our ambition.
Lovely, thank you very much. That is a word that keeps popping up on all the 2100's urgency. It's very frequently used, so, and I do get it. So any more questions? No? Right, I think that concludes the discussion on this item. We can now move to a conclusion. There, there is an action required on page 29 of the report, so I'd like to propose that the presenters are thanked for their attendance of answering the questions and the work undertaken on the, on the Fens 2100 plus programme be noted, and that the executor, the executive councillor for the environment and the executive councillor for place be recommended to continue the work with partners to develop the programme, the programme outputs, including the case for change and the baseline reports. Second of a second, please. All in favour? Thank you. Right, I think we should now take a well-earned comfort break. I can see one or two heads nodding, so, and then we'll pop, we'll come back in about 10 minutes. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. You've all got your drinks topped up. We'll just wait for Jess to take her seat and... We was waiting for you, councillor Baxter. Right, item seven, Lincolnshire Coast 2100 strategy funding. This report was issued to the committee via email on Friday the 18th of September. This is the first of two items where we are considering a proposed decision by the executive on the 7th of October. The report will be presented by Chris Miller and Matt Harrison. Not you again.
No, just me.
Just you this time. Matt, you can give it that one this time. There you go, Chris, thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, so the report in front of committee today regards the Lincolnshire Coast 2100 plus programme, that you'll recall at the last committee meeting of this committee in August, where Deborah Hickton of the Environment Agency gave a presentation which outlined the rising risk of potential coastal inundation, given the existing sea defence conditions and how they're beginning to decay, and what that means then for the people living at the coast. And as you heard, the EA's residual life assessment forecasts that the current defences start to degrade even worse and become even more ineffective from around 2040 onwards. The Lincolnshire 2100 plus project set out to seek to secure funding for measures to prolong the life of the defences to 2040 and agree to the long-term strategy for the coast and secure further funding to deliver that strategy. To do so, the partners need to present a compelling business case to government to secure this funding following the associated Treasury rules in doing so. So in summary, the actions required are we need to look for commitment from government to prolong the life of the existing defences to 2039, and that will be utilising a continuation of the existing beach nourishment campaign, which is due to close down in 2027 at present, to extend that through to 2039, and then secondly, to confirm lead and resource the long-term strategy for the coast. To secure the funding, the partnership business case must take a place-based approach, and through the government's set of linear sequential actions known as gateway reviews, the first piece of work taken on this partnership to gate zero, and effectively opening the door to government on the conversations required to secure the investment that we need. The remaining gateways are listed on page 11 of the supplemental report that you received that the chairman mentioned a moment ago, and forms the process under what's known as the National Infrastructure and Service Transformation Authority, or NISTA. Obviously, given the challenge and the other similar projects will also be bidding in the same timeframe, including places such as the Thames, Seven and Clyde, the business case for investment in Lincolnshire will be required to be thoroughly transformational and thoroughly robust. The cost estimated for the total business plan is approximately £4.1 million, with the Environment Agency funding a proportion of this to about £3.1 million of the cost to cover the element they will be leading on being the coastal investment plan. The remaining approximate costs are to create the concept vision of where the future economy, community and environment could look like in the various given scenarios for the coast, and that's that place shaping element that we bring as an authority along with the other partners to ensure that the appropriate business case is being prevented to government for the investment in the sea defences. Appendix two of the report, the supplemental report, outlines the individual elements of that NISTA process at gateway zero that will be required to meet, and the associated funding required to do for each section. Those funding is still, is an estimated amount, but it's based on professional guidance and undertaking benchmarking with consultancies of a type that would undertake that sort of work. The current cost of that remaining amount is approximately £994,000. The split between the three partners has not yet been agreed, that's the total amount, so the split will be between the Lindsay Marsh Drainage Board, ourselves at Lincolnshire County Council, and East Lindsay District Council. The Lindsay Marsh Drainage Board will determine what they're able to contribute to that, and then discussions between the leader of this council, councillor Matthews, and the leader of East Lindsay District Council, Craig Leyland, will be undertaken, I think in the next week, before the executive meeting, so that will then be known. At this stage, that proportional split isn't known, so in the report, it's just outlined at the estimated £994,000 between the three partners. The options not to other, to do something other than fund are listed in the report, but to just go through those quickly, the first option is to just do nothing. But as outlined in last month's report, that will mean that the risk to the coast becomes unmanaged and will not secure a case for investment for the period of 2017 to 2039 regarding the beach nourishment, as the government require that commitment to a long-term strategy from the partners to enable sort of decision-making to allow for that funding to be available to the Environment Agency to deliver that continuing beach nourishment. The second alternative would be to seek alternative opportunities for funding. As you know, there's potential for lots of investment at the coast, the national strategic infrastructure projects, and potentially other investors, but given the timeframe we're working to get into gateway zero, we're not in a position to have those conversations with the Ensit projects because it's not, you know, we're not in the same timeframe, they're not aligned yet. Going forwards, there may be some opportunities as we go through the future gateways if we get beyond gateway zero, so that is something we can pick up to look to mitigate future costs as well. And then the third alternative option is advocacy only. It means that a full business case wouldn't be being then built to Treasury rules, and that wouldn't be then completed, and it wouldn't be the evidential approach required, similar to what Amy was alluding to earlier with the Fens 2100 plus programme about everything being evidence-based to make sure that we are able to present to government the most robust case we can for that investment. So that would virtually leave us back with the same sort of issues as the do-nothing scenario of not being able to attain the investment. And that's my report, thank you, chairman. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Chris. I'd now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements, questions on the report. Do we have any speakers? Councillor Murray.
Thank you, chairman. This has been a very interesting experience for me because I've learned a lot from the coherent and professional presentations that we've had. And I think the only incoherent thing is that some members don't seem to understand or accept that part of the reason for the potential massive flooding of the farmland area in this county is rising sea levels. And it seems that this maybe is an act of God or something like that. It's not an act of God, it's an act of man, and it's all down to climate change. And I think the only, as I said, the only thing missing from this is an understanding of the serious nature of climate change on behalf of the Reform UK members.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Whitaker.
Thank you, chair. Thank you, Chris. Saying what you, listening to what you're saying and also listening to talking to Matthew just before, you're saying you're seeking investment into, to carry out this work, money, 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 investment to carry out this work. Can we be ensured that the looking for investments into this will, the investments will be in this country and not coming from abroad, so that this doesn't get owned by a French, German, Dutch, what's the name, country?
Okay, right, I have to pick someone up. So, what I was trying to allude to in terms of the investment required when we're looking at through the Ensit projects is those projects along that eastern coastline, whether that be the Eastern Greenlink three and four, the cable lines, or the National Grid, or the substation work and all the rest of it, because they have a vested, they will then have a vested interest in the protection to the coastline. So there's opportunity potentially to have those discussions, but we're not in that timeframe, and obviously, who owns those companies will be a matter of record, and we would hope, you know, that their vested interests would mean that they would want to aid in that protection.
Anyone else? Oh, councillor Baxter.
Thank you. I wonder, and apologies if it's in the report and I've not noted it, is there likely to be any role for the Greater Lincolnshire Combined Mayor Authority at any point, and what do you think might happen? If we are the lead partner, what might happen after local government reorganisation?
Thank you, councillor Baxter. No, it's not actually in the report, you're quite right. So, as part of the devolution deal that set up the Greater Lincolnshire Combined Authority, there was to be the setting up of the enhanced water partnership, that's ongoing at the moment through the mayoral office, and as part of that, this will, you know, these and the Humber 2100 and the Fens 2100 plus programmes will be discussed within that format, the aim being potentially, and hopefully, that the mayor acts as a strong advocate in the halls of Westminster to put forward the case for Greater Lincolnshire, whether it be Humber, Fens or the Lincolnshire coast. So that's very much the hope and expectation of the three individual projects, that the mayoral authority will pick that up from that perspective. In terms of local government reorganisation and what falls out of that, the issues won't have gone away. The coast will still be at risk regardless of what various councils might then exist after that, so it'll be down to those various partnerships to realign and reorganise based on new authority boundaries basically as to who's involved in each, but again, the expectation is that the programme would still continue with those new authorities.
Thank you. I'm going to the mayoral business and infrastructure meeting next week, and the agenda's come out recently. I'll pay more attention to the enhanced water partnership paperwork. Thank you.
Councillor Murray. Councillor Murray.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, it's just a quick one. I mean, it's pretty clear what needs to be done. You need the funding, we need to get on with it and get things, the ball rolling. Similar vein to what councillor Baxter was just saying, I was just going to ask what role the mayor's office could take in this with funding, if she, they were going to contribute anything towards these initial costs and such like. Because I know she was talking about these things, about sort of removing committees and getting experts and all this kind of stuff the other month, and her interest in setting up her own flooding group. And I think it's just really important that we emphasise that with the scale of these projects, how important they are, that now is not the time to mess about with different groups and bodies and not being sure who's actually doing what. And so it would be good to have some clarity, especially from the mayor's department, as to who's actually in charge of what, just so that these projects get pushed forward quickly.
Thank you, councillor Martin. I mean, as an officer of the authority, I can't really speak for the mayoral authority and what that would be determined out of that, or how the mayor will want to progress this. However, there is an opportunity through the enhanced water partnership to deliver this information and to explain how the mayoral office and the county combined authority can assist in that, certainly in the advocacy element of it, that that should be a strong role. Again, I can't, I can't speak for... Again, I can't, I can't speak for the mayoral authority on the rest of the question, I'm afraid.
Thank you very much. Any others? Councillor Beattie.
Thank you. Just a very quick question, actually. Is there a plan to share the Gateway Zero documents with the committee in early 2027?
Absolutely, as part of the process, you know, as part of the, one of the partners, we would expect to be bringing it back to committee at some point.
Anyone else? Councillor Corey.
Fancy that, chairman. Just to pick up on a point that has been alluded to before, and we've had some puffing and puffing from our colleagues this side, actually, the environment doesn't care what your political affiliations are or what colour tie you wear to full council. We're making these investments for our children and our grandchildren to secure their food security and for their, for the security of their homes, not for our immediate political comfort. What we need now, chairman, is strategic competence, courage and vision. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councillor Wilmurst.
Thank you, chair. I'd just like to come back on that a little bit. No one's disagreeing that the climate's changing, just the method of the change. The climate's changed for billions of years, long before people were around. But I quite agree, we do need the funding to do stuff to, you know, sort everything out, and that's what we're doing. So, you know, we'll take it as that, and we can agree to disagree on the method, but the climate is changing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All good, thank you. Right, I'll move that the committee, following through consideration of all the relevant information, supports recommendations to the executive as detailed on page four of the report. Just a quick one for, on item, recommendation four. Am I right that there is a typo on that? The deputy chief executive?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, chairman. I think that should read the deputy chief executive and executive director of resources and executive director of place. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So moving on from, I move that the summary of the comments be passed on to the executive for its consideration on the 7th of October 2025. Do I have a seconder? Thank you. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That is agreed. Item eight, adoption of updated local enforcement plan. This report is found on pages 35 to 110 of the agenda pack and will be presented by Neil McBride, head of planning.
Good, chairman. So I'm quickly going to delegate it to Lisa Hughes, who's sat next to me, who's the principal planning enforcement officer, who's largely created this report and plan. So I'll hand over to Lisa to present the report, but I'll be round to take the questions as well if necessary.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you, chairman. So you will note from the report that the council currently has a local enforcement plan. I will shorten this to LEAP. You will note in planning there are a lot of acronyms, so hopefully I will explain them. So the council first adopted a plan in the early 2010s. It reviewed it in 2020. And as noted in the report, there have been various changes in legislation and with the national planning policy framework, hence it's had this latest review. So in terms of changes, the key ones are in relation to time limits for immunity. I won't give you all the details, otherwise you'll be here for another fortnight. But in short, immunity now from the 25th of April last year for developments that are substantially completed is now 10 years rather than four years. You'll also probably be aware of the introduction of biodiversity net gain in relation to major developments in February last year and non-major developments in April last year, which requires the developers to provide a minimum of 10% net gain. We're required to monitor that as part of planning applications. So there's a chapter in relation to that. And one aspect which I am sure you will all be aware of is the nationally significant infrastructure projects. Obviously, these are relatively new and not really about in 2020. So we've introduced a chapter number 12 in relation to this as well. As part of the review, I looked at lots of other different councils' local enforcement plans to try to get ideas and to make ours as clear and concise as possible. And to enable us to directly refer people to certain aspects, there's now the introduction of four policies with what's called LEAP one, which deals with the foundations of how we investigate complaints and when we might take action. It should be noted that enforcement action is discretionary, largely when we're investigating a breach, unless it is so significant in terms of the environment, in terms of amenity, that it needs to stop immediately. We will try to engage with a person who's carrying out the breach in order to regularise it through their own means without needing to take formal action. There's policy LEAP two, which details how we monitor waste and minerals developments. So as a county council, we deal with minerals and waste. All other matters of planning control are the districts, which obviously includes the boroughs and the city council as well. With minerals, we can visit up to eight times and charge for those eight visits. Waste developments, the legislation guides us to do regular monitoring. So we aim to carry out monitoring once a year for each of the waste sites. LEAP three deals with how we respond to complainants. We've already made some changes in the last six months or so. Because of data protection, we automatically couldn't share a complainant's details and their address and phone numbers with the district. And invariably, the majority of complaints we receive are for the districts. So we've made changes so they can give their consent. And the LEAP details how we will do, sorry, policy LEAP three details how we will do with those as well. And LEAP four, a lot of our engagement is with the Environment Agency. A large number of complaints come from them, but we also engage with the police, with the HSE and other bodies. And it details how we will engage with those bodies and ensure whoever is the enforcing authority is the most appropriate person to take that action. In terms of our own developments, we would obviously hope that we always carry out our developments perfectly. And in 99% of the time, that is true. However, there's times, a bit like with external developers, where things might go slightly wrong, and we will engage with ourselves to try to sort it out because we're not able to legally enforce against ourselves. If we were to do something that was so significantly bad that enforcement action was necessary, we would have to liaise with the necessary district or borough council. As said by the chairman, this report is quite long. The majority of it is because the local enforcement plan is so detailed, because it also details the tools that we have to our hands in terms of enforcement. And so we've introduced as a new document, a guide to planning enforcement, which is far more bite sized. It aims to enable the person on the street to understand what we're going to do and when, principally when they make a complaint to us in relation to enforcement matters. And the intention is, as well as to have both of these documents on our website, should we receive a complaint, then we will write to the complainant so that they're aware of how their case will progress, because some enforcement cases can take quite extensive times. So in summary, it's a refresh of our previous document with the introduction of some new chapters and also with the guidance leaflet. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Do we have any questions, comments? Councillor Baxter?
Thank you. Three questions. One is biodiversity net gain, which fascinates me. As I understand it, if I take a piece of open farmland, build 200 houses on it, the planning permission requires me to improve the amount of biodiversity on that site. Is there any case law on that yet? Have we taken any action on BNG and what happens next? Do you want these one at a time, or shall I go through the whole lot?
I'm happy to go one at a time. Unfortunately, you weren't here at the start of the meeting, but I don't, at this stage, I think I'm happy to go with three questions, councillor Baxter.
So in terms of biodiversity net gain, I'm not aware of any case law having come out. We haven't enforced so far. It is still very early days. There was a complete across the country slowdown in planning applications in February, probably till August last year, because ecologists just didn't exist. Or they weren't enough for the amount of work that was coming through. So since it's come into force, we've obviously issued decisions. And we're engaging with the developers who've got those permissions with a condition on to remind them, because they have to do the biodiversity net gain plan to comply with the legal requirements for net gain prior to doing any development and to have that plan approved. So we are actively monitoring those.
Thank you. Work in progress, it sounds. The national infrastructure projects, that's interesting also. At what point would we take action? I've read the flow chart. Are we likely, can you foresee that we would take action on any of those individual projects in the foreseeable? Or are all the, all the people who are doing NISP's in Lincolnshire behaving impeccably?
Unless Neil tells me differently, I don't believe any of the EnCIPs have actually started yet.
No. So of all the ones that have come through in the last sort of two or three years, no development has actually commenced yet. So we wouldn't be in a position to take any action at this stage. I think nationally, I'm not aware that there has been any enforcement against EnCIP related development, because immediately it becomes a criminal offence. So I think what would be probably, you know, we would be looking to do would be to monitor that development. And if there was any breaches, then to negotiate with the developer to try and secure that. But obviously, to date, none of the developments have commenced, so we've not been in a position to have to do that. But this is about preparing ourselves. So, you know, if all these consents, you know, we've already had some that have been granted, others are likely to follow on, so we're trying to get ourselves ready for the cases if they do come forward.
Thank you. That's fascinating. No, no enforcement action has been taken against any EnCIP nationwide?
From my research, I couldn't find any examples of where there's been enforcement action taken against a development consent order, no.
Thanks. There's a challenge. And thirdly, how many enforcement actions do we generally take? Is it one a year, 10 a year, varies from year to year? Are we actually taking action, enforcement action to justify this policy? Thank you.
It varies year to year. I would think this year, I was trying to get a number in my head, because I thought that might be one of the questions. And I think we've probably issued formal notices, which I call the enforcement notices, material change you use, about six. We've also issued a temporary, sorry, a temporary stop notice and followed that up with a stop notice as well on one of the developments. Largely, most people out there engage with us, but there are some developments where you try to engage, they don't play ball, and we will then issue a notice.
So if I could have one more go, chair. The, so the six, without being very specific, are they of the type of dig that ditch? Or are they of the type of stop that quarry?
I believe, and I won't want to be quoted on it, they all relate to waste developments. Largely waste developments that have taken place without the necessarily planning permissions. And there are sites where we've made that assessment that planning permission would be unlikely. The notices are in the public domain. So one is a parcel of land where I think people have just deposited waste they've collected from other households onto it. There is a site which has had landfill deposited on it, quite extensive. And whilst I said most are waste related, one was a boat on a parcel of land.
Thank you very much. Councillor Reeve?
Thank you, thank you. It's not so much a question, I've got a little statement, if that's okay, that totally agree with planning enforcement and anything that bolsters that, I think is great, so long as it is applied evenly and with a large amount of common sense. Sometimes things seem to get stopped or done just because they haven't put the right paperwork in and the house is told to pull it down. But common sense need to be applied. But laws need, if laws are made, they must be enforced. We've got too many situations already in this country from the bottom end of the scale, where my number one complaint at planning parish councils, dogfowling. It's against the law, but nobody enforces it. Right up to shoplifting, it's against the law, but you can do it if it's below a certain level. Laws are there to be enforced, otherwise people take the mick. So anything that enhances that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? No? Thank you. Right, well that concludes the discussion on the item. We can now move to conclusions. I will move the committee, following through consideration of the relevant information, supports, recommendations of the executive, to the executive set out on pages 37 of the report. And I move that the summary of the comments be passed to the executive for consideration on the 7th of October 2025. Do I have a seconder? Thank you. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item nine, the work programme. Now's the time for the standard work programme item on the agenda, which is set out on pages 111 to 117. This provides the committee an opportunity to review the work programme and suggest topics for future consideration. I would like to ask Simon Evers to present this item.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman. There are no major, no substantial changes to the work programme. There are a couple of things to pick up from this morning in terms of timetabling. For example, the Fens 2100 outputs, I think the visitor from the Environment Agency referred to January, but it is listed for November, but I will get clarification of that. But in summary, no major changes to report. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. Does anyone wish to make any comments or ask any questions on the content of the work programme? Councillor Murray? Martin, sorry?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's just a quick one. Is there any chance we could have an item on endangered species in Lincolnshire? Because they seem to crop up from time to time and like water voles, et cetera. Because we have done this, we have done this before at South Kirstyben, we had an item on it, and it was actually quite fascinating to see what was out there. And we had some, a group come in and do a big presentation to us.
You've noted it, yeah. Thank you very much. Any other comments? No? Thank you. This now concludes the discussion on the item. We can now work the programme into including suggestions from the committee. Thank you very much. That now concludes the business for today of the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Have a surf change in your home and look forward to seeing you all again. Thank you.
Thank you, chair.